Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Good morning. Alderman Jean Baptiste. Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
It's Green Day.
Seven members are here. We have a quorum. Welcome to the public hearing of the fiscal year 2011 proposed budget. Does convene a public hearing? Did I just do that?
You did, Madam.
Excellent. We are here to hear citizen comment, and so I'm going to call up the first four speakers. Please come up over there and line up and speak one after the other. You each, I hope, have three minutes, and I hope that will be enough for you. First is Fred Schneider, then Rick Nelson, Dave Cook, and Marcia Akenbach.
You certainly may. All right, Fred, you now have nine minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Later in the day, I might fall for that one.
I'm going to move pretty quickly here, so I hope you can sit with me. Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and City Manager. My name is Fred Schneider, and I'm a member of the Evanston Environmental Association Board. We've given you a printed information in front of you that we hope you'll consider when it comes time to decide on the proposed reduction of the clerk three position at the Ecology Center from a full-time to a part-time position. I'd like to go through these materials real quickly. If you turn to the first slide, which looks at the impact of the proposed reduction on the center's ability to continue to earn revenues at its current rate. The first bullet point shows that the reduction should save the city around $30,000 approximately, which concludes partial salary and all health and pension benefits and would reduce the clerk three hours by one-third. The second bullet point states that this position is a key part of the center's earned revenue capability since all revenue generating related marketing applications and processing goes through that position. That employee handled more than 2,300 revenue generating transactions over this past year, totaling $340,000 in earned revenues. The impact of reducing this position is outlined in the next bullet point, which is the third bullet point on the sheet, which shows that reducing the position's hours by one-third could result in nearly 800 fewer transactions and a loss of $113,000 in earned revenues, assuming there's a one-to-one correlation between the number of hours worked and the number of revenue generating transactions. The last bullet point is a simple cost-benefit analysis of the proposed reduction. The cut will save the city approximately $30,000, while the loss in earned revenues could be as much as $113,000, resulting in a loss of up to $83,000 in revenues that would have to be made up by the city. Even a more conservative estimate would indicate that the city would lose more revenues than it would gain by implementing this reduction. If you turn to the second slide, it's a graph. The next slide is a graph that was presented by our own Evanston's informative website, Evanston Now a few weeks ago. It looks at four types of nonessential city services: recreation, ecology center, cultural arts, and the library. Page three. Third page in that handout, right there. That's the one. Sorry, that was five seconds I lost. Okay. It looks at four types of nonessential city services: recreation, ecology center, cultural arts, and the library, and simply compares how well each service is able to cover its spending or budget by user fees, or what we're calling earned revenues. The ecology center and the cultural arts are clearly more effective at generating user fees, with the ecology center being most effective covering 80% of its costs to the city by user fees, while the other areas range from 72% all the way down to 1%. Please remember that the clerk three position is the one position at the ecology center that is most responsible for the center's ability to generate user fees. Next, on to the last slide, which is a graph that shows that the ecology center increased its earned revenues every year since 2007. The green bars show ecology center earned revenues or user fees each year; the red bars represent total budget or expenditures; and the blue bars show how much remains as a cost to the city. As you can see, the green bars go up significantly from 2007 to 2010, while the blue bars get smaller and smaller. The ecology center has gone from generating 56% of its revenues in 2007 to 80% this year, or from generating $266,000 in '07 to over $340,000 this year. There's a clear continual pattern of growth in the ability of the ecology center to cover more and more of its costs to the city. For 2010, the center will cost the city about $78,000. We believe that's a real bargain for what the ecology center provides to the community. This analysis suggests that any cuts in staffing, particularly the reduction of the clerk three's position, would immediately impact this continual pattern of growth in earned revenues that they've been achieving year after year. I'd like to make one additional comment. In the follow-up response to the City Council by the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department regarding the impact of the proposed cut to the ecology center, it was presented that should the city agree to the cut, the center's hours of operation would be reduced so that in 2011 it would open daily from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The ecology center participates in the Safe Roots to School program, and if it will no longer be open before 10:00 a.m. and after 3:00 p.m., then it can no longer serve as a safe haven to hundreds of children during their trips to and from school. Thank you for giving us the time to present this information to you. We wish you the best in your deliberations. Sorry I went too fast, I know.
Thank you very much. Alderman Rainey.
Yes. Madam Mayor, could you give us some idea of the process here? Are people going to be timed? Are we going to be able to ask the speakers questions?
People are being timed, and if you wish to ask specific questions, you can, although that's not our customary process during public comments.
Some of this is stuff that we might, like, I'm not really that familiar with the ecology center, and I'm just wondering. Secondly, I know you're the mayor, and you can make any rule you want, but I think to time a public hearing, speakers, is just, it just doesn't seem right.
Okay, if you want unlimited time, we can do that.
Well, you know.
But you have to be willing to stay, then.
I understand.
We have to all be able to stay.
I would just hope that people would be thoughtful of everybody's time. I mean, you know, I mean, we're all in this together. But I just think to time people in a public hearing, how much time are you giving? Three minutes?
Mr. Schneider had nine, but didn't use it.
Mr. Schneider, shame on him.
He only used two. You only used two.
And I greatly appreciate it.
Anyway, I just.
Okay, what's the consensus of the group? Do you want to have untimed?
I mean, if somebody's going to get up here and go on for 20 minutes, we need to get the hook. But if they're going to speak for five or six minutes, I mean, I think in order to get a rational thought out and to really be convincing, you need a few more minutes than three or five. I don't know.
Well, I'm happy to go to an untimed hearing, but I'm also, I'm willing to stay, but I don't know that everybody can past 12:00 or 12:30.
I understand.
Ma'am?
I just wanted to.
Yes.
How many speakers do we have?
We have more signing up, I believe.
That may determine, you know, how open we should be.
As of now, we had about 30, well, I don't know who's.
We'll check right.
The chief told me that he needed another sheet and that more people were signing up, so I would guess.
Madam Mayor.
Thirty times three is an hour and a half.
I understand. I didn't realize we had that many. All right, there's a reason for the timing then.
Okay, well, let's.
Let's not unreasonably restrain people.
I have never been known for unreasonably restraining any speaker. They have gone over consistently. Alderman Burris, and then we're.
We're good.
All right.
You asked a question. Thank you.
All right. Marcia Akenbach, you either have, you have four minutes or an unlimited time. I hope that's clear.
Well, I hope to get a rational thought out and be convincing in two minutes.
Oh, wow.
Because that's kind of what we ended up with last year, right? So, good morning, Madam Mayor, Alderman, and City Manager. As you know, my name is Marcia Akenbach. I live at 711 Roslin Terrace. I've lived in Evanston happily for the last 47 years. For the past two and a half years, I've been the Chair of the Mental Health Board. I'd like to speak in support of the Community Purchase of Services Program. I hope the funds to purchase these human services for the residents of Evanston who need them can be funded at its current level of $654,000 for 10 months. These funds are needed to support vital programs that address many of Evanston's social problems. By social problems, I mean situations that are sources of difficulty or threaten the stability of the community and require a program of amelioration. Example of social problems are drug abuse, homelessness, mental illness, juvenile delinquency, pregnant teens, teen parenting, school dropouts, domestic violence, child abuse, and elder abuse. Some might argue that it is not a city's responsibility to address social problems. This may be true in smaller cities, but I will argue that in a city the size and complexity of Evanston, unaddressed social problems can cause a deterioration in the social fabric. The fact Evanston has had for many years the good sense and the will to attend to these social problems is something a citizen of Evanston can be proud of. The city's funding of human services to address social problem ensures an intimate involvement on the part of the city in attending to these problems. The city's funding of human services commits the social service agencies to an Evanston presence so they can adequately serve Evanston residents. The city's close involvement with this process means the social problems do not remain out of sight and out of mind until situations deteriorate and reach a crisis stage. As Benjamin Franklin put it, "An ounce in prevention is worth a pound of cure." This is basically a pragmatic argument. I urge the Alderman to continue to support Evanston's historic and wise approach to the amelioration of its social problems by funding the community purchase of services at the current level. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mark Metz, Jordan Luer, Barbara Zipzalka, and Bruce Mitchell. And if you would state your name and address.
Good morning. My name's Mark Metz, and I live at 2125 Sherman Avenue. I'm currently President of the Playground and Recreation Board, and I noticed in the Budget Reduction Workshop, or worksheet, that there's a proposal to eliminate yet another full-time recreation maintenance worker, along with three parks and forestry workers and various other maintenance workers. I want to point out that since 2007, in the department, we've lost something on the order of 13 full-time positions in recreation alone. I know personally that one of those worked on field preparation in our parks for all of our youth sports programs. Also during that time, 2007, there was a full-time position lost in parks. A supervisor was lost in 2009 in parks. Forestry lost a worker way back in 2003. My point is that we're getting to the point where we're going to not be able to take care of our parks the way they need to be taken care of. This is going to have a major impact on youth sports. Parks, as you know, is highly visible. I know that the paper, and it's listed as a nonessential service, but, you know, when you think about visibility and what affects quality of life in Evanston, parks play a huge role. And I'm real worried that we're getting to the point where, you know, if there was ever fat in that budget, it's long gone, and we're cutting bone deeply into it. And, you know, I know, we've seen this before. I can remember when I, before I got involved in running the baseball, the youth baseball league here, James Park was in pretty sad condition, and it was not being maintained properly, and we had about 650 kids playing Little League baseball at that time. James Park gets refurbished, Parks Department does a much better job of maintaining and lining and doing all the things they have to do, and all of a sudden today we have about 1,650 kids playing Little League baseball. Now, I'd like to tell you that's because of the great group of volunteers that we've always had in that organization, and that's certainly a part of it, but let's face it, without the investment of capital and the great maintenance of the facility, people just go somewhere else to play. They'll vote with their feet. So, you know, I strongly urge that we look for other places in the budget, and I know I run the risk here. Paul Krugman, in his article in the New York Times yesterday, referred to making proposals for cuts without specifics as intellectual cowardice, and I don't want to be guilty of that, but nevertheless, I would urge you to look for other places in the budget where we can make some cuts that are not going to be so visible and so painful to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jordan Luer. I am the Executive Director for the North Shore Senior Center, which is located in Northfield, but we have a significant presence here in our office at 840 Dodge in Evanston. I reside in 156 Allegheny Road in Gray's Lake. The North Shore Senior Center is supported through funds of the Evanston Mental Health Board, and I certainly want to start by thanking the City Council for their support. I think the North Shore Senior Center is one of many good examples of how the Evanston Mental Health Board funds are an efficient and wise use of those resources. We help, for example, maintain seniors' independence, help them remain in their homes, help wrap services and support around them so that they can remain. And this certainly becomes less costly than those individual, for the individuals and the community that they remain in their homes as opposed to the other alternatives, which are ending up in nursing homes, ending up in foreclosures, and ending up as a burden to other city agencies. An example, I think, of the efficient use of the funds, we will serve this coming year 2,259 low-income seniors here in Evanston at a cost to the city of $17.70 per person served. So I think that's a very efficient use of resources, and again, I thank the City Council for its continued support.
Thank you.
I'd just like to mention that the Community Development Black Grant Committee also funds the North Shore Senior Center.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Zipzalka, 1723 Chancellor Street. I'm a 35-year resident of the city and a branch library user, a former Central Street business owner, and currently a high school librarian. I'm here to beg you to keep our branch libraries alive for this interim 10-month budget until the library fund and board can take over. As a former Central Street business owner, I can attest to the role the branch library played in bringing customers to my store. Realistically, no library can ever afford the collection it would like to have. My school library cutbacks the past three years cause our reference collection to suffer while I try to keep our students reading regularly with less expensive titles. Undeniably, our Evanston library collection deserves improvement, but it shouldn't be optimized at the expense of the branch services. We could pursue collaboration with Northwestern University that would extend circulation rights to their collection, to Evanston residents, like we do to theirs. If you close the branches, we, the users, are not going to go downtown, but there will be long-term trickle-down effects to business, community, real estate, and ultimately to tax revenues as we visit neighbors like Willmadder Skolki for library services. If we lose the branches now, they're gone forever. We keep them alive for these next 10 months, our knowledgeable and committed library board can do the professional job of balancing resources and services. So please, don't pull the plug prematurely. Let our branches live through this next budget cycle. We don't plan to close two beaches so the downtown beach could have all the beach funds. We don't cut down large trees just to conserve maintenance costs. A new 2010 Dominican University study demonstrated that students in summer reading programs had higher reading scores and higher standard test scores than those who did not. The branches do an excellent job with summer reading, and that's just one of their many services. It would be a tragedy to close the branch libraries in a sad and irrevocable loss to blemish Evanston history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning to the council and to everyone here. My name is Bruce Mitchell. I live at 2740 Harrison Street and have lived there for 41 years. I am here to speak in favor of keeping the branch libraries open. I hope that your decision to close the branches is not already a fait accompli, a done deal. Many have argued that the modest cost of maintaining the branches is nevertheless prohibitive, and that the library itself is an anachronism, a dinosaur competing with Kindles, readers, iPads, and other smaller, brighter, faster computers. It is no secret that to compete with these technologies, libraries will have to take on new roles, reconfigure their spaces, and become cultural centers of social networking as well as viable learning environments. The Evanston Library and its branches are already doing all of these things, from providing high-speed internet access for an extraordinary range of people and ages, to serving as walking-distance, easy-access community centers. Through the generations, the Evanston libraries have served as comfortable spaces where people can meet, discuss, evaluate, and share information. They have been safe havens where unseen linkages could be formed between individuals and information. The two branches, north and south, are important outposts of the main library, public spaces where neighborhoods can shake hands and impart knowledge. That has been the branch's long and unheralded history, which now may end in a single vote. For some surgeons, to cut a limb is simple, but for most patients, that cut is complex. Long-term familial and familiar places of connection will suddenly be gone, and we, as a community, will see less of each other, shake hands less often, and find our children's children's Evanston a little less welcoming. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Charlotte Sussman and Emile Ferris on Hull Terrace.
Good morning, and thank you all for being here. My name is Charlotte, and I've been an Evanstonian since 1994. I live on Main and Hinman, 904 Hinman, which is just around the corner of the South Branch. Ever since I moved in, I've always visited the library. As a little girl, I always went to the libraries. They opened up doors for education and reading. Living in the south, kind of on the south side of Evanston, I have come to notice how many people do actually use the South Branch. For the last 10 years, I am probably in there 75% of the time it's open, and every time I go in, I see the different people who visit it and use it. People like me, middle-aged, white, educated, children of all colors, doing their homework, getting access to internet. I see seniors reading, socializing, being together. I see adults looking for jobs, educating themselves. I see business owners-to-be researching how they can become a better businessperson. The libraries are so important to all of us in so many different ways, just like a lot of services that is being offered and provided here in Evanston. I do understand the budget cuts are hard, and just like we, as a person, have to consider the consequences of the cuts, so I ask the city to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Sussman. I am one of the owners of Vogue Fabrics, but I was also born and raised in Evanston and grew up in Evanston. I wanted to come today to kind of just address what I believe in, and I do understand and respect as a business owner when budgets have to be addressed, but I don't think that the branches should be closed. I feel, as a business owner, I strongly believe that wasteful spending should be addressed first, and bottom line, as a community member, as a mother, and as a business owner, I do not feel that the public library branches should be closed.
Thank you.
This is, I'm at Emile Ferris, and I'm at 630 Hull Terrace. This is my daughter Ruby, and so you're supposed to say hello, Madam Mayor and City Council Leadership, and I appreciate this idea that we have a little more time, because I forgot my glasses, so she's going to be my eyes at various points, because I, it's just like a jumble right this moment. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today about one of the most important facets of this wonderful community that we live in. It's very literary, educated community, which is, of course, our libraries, our public libraries. My daughter Ruby joins me in standing here today to speak to you because, from her earliest years, the Evanston Library has been a well-cherished, critical component of her education. As a tot, we would come twice weekly to the little readings, and she just developed this tremendous love of books and, you know, storytime, and later she participated in the summer reading program, which was very exciting for her. Presently, I am breaking a long-term stint of poverty, and I'm negotiating a book contract with a publisher in New York, and the Evanston Library has played a very important part in providing me again and again reference material critical to my authorship. So the libraries are a thrice-weekly destination for my family, and as I've just completed my grad degree at the Art Institute's writing program and have consequently been an extra poor student, because it's very expensive, for the last few years, the South Branch Library provided me a way to access the internet and find out what my professors wanted out of me. It was very, very critical to me. This is the point I'm making, you know, I really do understand what's at stake here, because in my neighborhood, and I'm very into talking to people, in my neighborhood, the use of the South Branch Library to allow poor and elderly people a convenient way within walking distance to access the internet is very, very common. And this is true especially these days, when poorer folks are, you know, shouldering the brunt of the economic downturn. So, you know, for $4.5 round-trip bus ride to the library, that isn't an option for a lot of us. So this is where, this is more, I think it's more, is that more?
Where is it?
Right there? Yeah. This is more the case than ever at a time when folks are struggling to find jobs and thereby keep their homes, and the South Branch Library's internet access is critical to their job searches. And as I said, they aren't in a position to pay for computers and the expensive link. So they also aren't in a position to pay for what amounts to an extra $100 per month to reach the main branch library. So, you know, that's a big thing, and we're going to see the ripple effect of that. If you really go there and you talk to people who are very marginal at this point and are really struggling, being able to walk to a library is a pretty major thing to check for that job search, and you see them standing in line, and they're just hoping somebody has emailed them back. I mean, there's a lot of desperation out there. So I've met people like this, and my neighbor, I can think of, I can think of five neighbors who've used the library in this way, many of whom couldn't be here today. If you go there, you'll see them, and they're willing to wait in line for access for a long, long time to be able to do this. And so, so it's especially critical that this. And so, so it's especially critical that this internet service remain within walking distance of these people who are elderly and, like myself, disabled, or too poor to afford the cost of an internet connection. Thank you very, very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Oh, and I just wanted to mention, it comes down to $2.50 per head, per taxpayers, to pay for the South Branch Library, you know?
Thank you. K Silver. Kay, are you here?
I'm Kathy.
Oh, okay. I thought you were here. Next would be Cass Wolf, Kevin O'Connor, Brian Barnes, and Debbie Kaiser.
Morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Cass Wolf. I'm a 19-year resident at 325 Dewey Avenue. I am also the Executive Director of Infant Welfare Society of Evanston. We have baby toddler nursery at 2200 Main, teen baby nursery housed in the Family Focus Building, and a family support program. We are here, I am here, to acknowledge the City Council and the City Manager, those making the budgets, to thank you for your support of Human Services, that in these tough economic times, I don't envy any of your jobs. I won't be running for any of your jobs in the near future. But that making sure that human, basic human services are met is critical. So I thank you for your support of the Human Services Mental Health Board. I am, I am an employer of 40 full-time and three part-time people. We keep 70 parents working, 70 families working, and up to 16 teens in high school getting their diplomas. So the work we do is critical to our community. And I guess the final point I want to make is the reason I moved to Evanston and stay in Evanston is because I am a firm supporter of Human Services, and that's what I value about Evanston. That we care about our people, that we do more things than probably many other communities in the North Shore and the North suburban area to support our families and those in need. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Burris, did you have a question?
I actually had a referral to, not this last speaker, but the speaker before. Her comments about walking, having walkability access because people can't afford to get to the library. I'd like to actually know exactly what walkability, what is the definition of walkability? What is that sort of distance? So I'd like to know that in sort of best-practice terms, A. B, once we determine that, how many Evanstonians then cannot walk, or it's not walkability to either branch or the main? And of those that are not in the walkability area, west, south Evanston, how many of those folks are under the poverty line or in CDBG areas and can't afford to take a bus? So once again, we are limiting the access. When people say, "Well, you're limiting so people can't take a bus to get to the South Branch, or the North Branch, or the main library," how many people can really walk to one of the libraries? It's exclusionary over and over again. When people talk about, "Poor folks can't get to the library," look at the West Side and look at the deep South Side.
Is that a question for Mary Johns to answer it?
Somebody could get an answer for what walkability is. I want a question about how many people that are under the poverty line or in CDBG areas can't walk to a library and most likely can't afford bus fare to get to a library versus the people in the, that are surrounded, walkability area for the North Branch and the South Branch that are not in CDBG areas, nor the number are under the poverty line. So I want to talk about the financial, people surrounding those two branch libraries and the main branch, how much money they make, and are they in CDBG areas? And can they afford to take a bus? Or can the people on the West Side and the South Side?
Alderman Burris, I think we understand the question. I was just simply trying to refer it to Mary rather than to the previous speaker, because...
She doesn't know.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman Burris, we'll start the list of questions, and we'll provide written responses, as we have in the past.
Good morning. My name is Brian Barnes. I live at 510 Sheridan Road. I'm also the city's inclusion specialist. For those of you that don't know what my position is, I will tell you very briefly what it is. The position was created about 11 years ago at the request of the disabled community to provide two services. Number one, the city is a Title II entity under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act requires that the city has someone on staff. Because we are an entity with 50 or more employees, we are required to have someone on staff who can address any and all compliance-related issues, as well as any complaints that come in. Secondly, the position acts as an advocate for the disabled community, to give a voice to those that may not have a voice, and those that have needs in the community that would not otherwise be served. I'm here today because the position is scheduled for elimination in this proposed budget. Ladies and gentlemen, I never wanted to do this. I'd never thought, in my wildest dreams, I would have to stand here and do this. Those of you on the council that had been here a while, you know who I am, you know what I do. You can look outside if you want to see some of the things that I've done in this community. Some of you in your wards have seen the work I've done. Very recently, Family Focus installed an elevator, became fully compliant after six years of work. This position is not something that can be given to people to be trained to do, with all due respect. This position is something that you have to have life experience to do. I'm 36 years old. I've been disabled all my life. I have 16 years of experience as a trainer for ADA. I know the law back and forth, with all due respect to the staff and all due respect to the people here. I read the proposed answer to your budget question that was received. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no way, with all due respect to those individuals, that those individuals can be trained to do what I do. I not only do complaint answering for the disabled community, I am also required by the federal government to provide an ADA transition plan for compliance for this organization. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm in the middle of finishing the third draft. It is the third draft in six years that I have been here. The reason I keep on having to do it is because there's changes that occur every year. Someone cannot just come in and be trained to do that. You just don't have the resources, you just don't have the manpower to do it. Ladies and gentlemen, everybody knows for a fact that the disabled community is about 9,000 people in this community. That's about 10% of your population, not counting the senior citizen population. Ladies and gentlemen, you just cannot go and divide the position up as it's scheduled to be done. It just can't be done with the same results. It takes someone on staff full-time to keep up with the state and federal regulations. With all due respect, ladies and gentlemen, this is a mistake, it's wrong, and it's not just because it's me. I would say it for any of the other positions that are on the block. We all do good work for the city, we all earn our paychecks here. None of our positions are fluff positions. None of our positions just sit here and do nothing. We all earn our pay. But this position is unique in the sense that it serves a community that would not otherwise be served. And I ask you to please reconsider the elimination of the position, and please reconsider the thought of breaking it up as you wish to do. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no way that the city can remain compliant without someone on staff to do it. There's just no way we can remain compliant and answer the grievances that we get, ladies and gentlemen, in six years that I've been here. 97% of all the grievances that have come across my desk have been answered by me because of negotiation and education to entities throughout the community. 3% of the, 3% of the total amount of grievances were done with the assistance of the Law Department. But I've been able to negotiate the rest of them. And it's simply because most people just don't understand what's required by the law. And that's not something that you can just minimize. I saw what the position says that I do. It's not accurate. I'm also a Spanish-speaking person, so I translate for staff here when necessary. I put in curb ramps for people when they ask. Alderman will call, and I will help them. And I will do what I can for the disabled community. There's 9,500 people with disabilities, not counting senior citizens. That's 10% of your population, ladies and gentlemen. And I think it would be a mistake, I think it would be wrong, and I think it would be sending the wrong message. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Good morning. Kevin O'Connor, 1227 Isabella. In the city manager's transmittal letter, he states that no increase in property taxes will be as part of his submitted budget to fund operational expenses for the third consecutive year. However, there is a 3% increase for police and fire pension obligations. It's nice to see that we're now starting to deal with something that has not been dealt with by many of our previous councils. I'm going to probably skip around a little bit. I read in the Pioneer Press that Ward Manufacturing Company is using $700,000 in TIF assistance and asking to reduce their tax rate from 25% to 10% for 10 years to allegedly save $600,000 in total property taxes. The EDC, the Economic Development Committee, which I was unable to attend, voted to send this to the council. Once again, this is more privatizing profit and socializing risk. Under the pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, approximately $24,000 is paid in lieu of taxes by the Housing Authority of Cook County. I don't know, you know, much about that, but the other one really raised my eyebrows, $60,000 by Three Crowns Park. Now, perhaps they're not-for-profit, I don't know. I'm curious as to why they're not paying taxes. As far as 2% COLA for non-union employees, senior social security recipients have had no COLA for the last two years. This is approximately $165,000. Now, if we're stuck with our union obligations, why are we not making our savings with our non-union obligation, or non-union employees? The city manager talks about reinstitution of 2% of the 5% pay cut for directors, and that is going to cost $37,500 in additional expenses. I think this is very tone-deaf, and I don't think this should be voted on. Now, we're still basically bankrupt when you consider our pension obligations. On the fire budget, I like the idea that I saw of reducing overtime. If you do it by 5%, that saves $15,000. If you do it by 20%, that's $60,000. In the city manager's office, account number 68205, it shows a proposed amount of $333,200 for contingencies. Now, that's interesting to me when all the library branches need is $150,000 to keep going. And to respond to Alderman Burris and to this council, how did the library get in this situation? It did. Who did not fund the library properly? Who let kick the can down the road on the pensions? And who did not have the outreach to the West Side and other parts of the city? You have a, you have a library director and library board and a very large, the largest citizens' group in this city working to do that. I would, I find a greater outrage with that than anything else. Automobile equipment, I've gone back and forth on this. It shows that we're proposing almost $2 million, 1.9 million, for new automobile equipment. Last year, it was, we approved 1.7, $1,760,000. I see all sorts of new cars going around. I still see pretty high maintenance expenses. So if you're looking for a place to cut, I would suggest there. It's hard for most of us that, you know, I have a 1998 Honda, I'm driving around, I'm keeping it going. Maybe we should go longer than the 10-year maintenance cycle. On the, in the budget, it says the city of Evanston's percent of the tax bills for the last 10 years. It went from 18.36% to 19.97%. What is left out is the effect of the TIFs. Remember the TIFs? If no money can come out of those tax, the TIF districts, all of the other taxing bodies, including schools, will raise their taxes. So yes, the city isn't getting a big increase, but as citizens, we are experiencing a very large increase over the past 25 years from each of those other tax districts. Finally, I, on, under position detail, it looks like we're, it's proposed for 2011 for FTE, for full-time employees, to increase, increase it by 13.35 full-time employees. I can't believe there is not fat in this bureaucracy, in this institution, that cannot be cut further. We seem to hover right around 800 or so. And I know that there are parts of the city staff that needs to have more staff, but I know that there's parts that probably do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Yeah, I, I think it's important to clarify the $300,000 contingency in the city manager's budget.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, it's been past practice that a contingency within the general fund is budgeted. It so happens that it's budgeted in the city manager's office account. That number has fluctuated over time. What we try to do is provide some flexibility. That $300,000 number is, I'm not sure what the percentage of the total general fund, under 1% of the total general fund. So provide some flexibility for unattended, unanticipated costs. Many years it's not used, other years it's used completely, so.
Madam Mayor, if I may respond, in 2009 and 2010, under contingencies, there was $872 in that fund. Next year, or this budget is proposed, it's $333,200. And I would ask that maybe if Wally could provide what that money is used for, unless we need to get a FOI out on that. But I will tell you this, when I saw there was nothing funded for it in '09, '10 fiscal year, and I saw it was at $400,000 and then reduced and proposed to $333,200, that's a big red flag. And also considering the $150,000 that the branch libraries need, you know, it's funny, on one hand, we're saying we're broke, "Come on, citizens, help us," and that. On the other hand, we've got plenty of money, but only for certain people's projects. The libraries are the people's project.
Kevin O'Connor, thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Wait, can you just say?
I'm sorry. Um, city manager, I...
Our apologies, Debbie.
I thought, in some cases, the, the reserve fund in the manager's office had to do with salary increases, certain kinds of salary increases. No?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, certainly not, since I've been city manager. When we were doing the budget a year ago for this, my first budget, I asked that question, "What is it used for?" And was told that, and has been my practice in other communities I've worked in, is that you just normally put aside a pot of money if there are unforeseen circumstances that come along. It's budgeted in different places. Some communities just choose to take it from their reserves. I think it's prudent to have a small amount of operating money available to the council. It would not be spent without council approval. And again, if we would like some detail, we'd be happy to detail how it has been spent over the last couple of years. I think we'll just go ahead and provide that for the council and the community so that there's no further question.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bobkowitz just answered my question.
All right. I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Good morning again. My name is Debbie Kaiser. I live at 2800 Harrison Street, and I am speaking for the Evanston Public Library friends. We believe that the libraries are providing essential resources for the education of our citizens. From babies, early learners, to baby boomers... From babies, early learners, to baby boomers, lifetime learners, and everyone in between and beyond, we believe that branch libraries are economic anchors. We believe that all citizens deserve library services. We know that for the last 100 years, neighborhood services have worked for local businesses, for summer reading programs for children, for seniors with limited mobility. We know that neighborhood librarians and programs are as important as their facilities. We know that neighborhood services are inexpensive, $2 for every $1,000 on a tax bill, and they are highly effective. One-tenth of the library budget, yet we are one-half of the library growth. The Library Board of Trustees understands both the value and the potential of our library services, and will make the best decision for Evanston. We ask you, increase the city manager's proposed budgetary amount for the library by $150,000 to the amount proposed by the Library Board of Trustees. We ask that you grant that budget amount to the library fund without restriction, to be administered by the Library Board of Trustees, for the good of the library, the citizens of Evanston, in fulfillment of their statutory duty. We ask that you allow all of us to move forward, to stabilize, grow, and sustain our libraries, and take advantage of the tremendous opportunity this represents for all of Evanston. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Dan McAndrew, Diane Allen, Martha Artson, and Lori Summers.
Good morning. My name is Dan McAndrew. I live at 1529 Madison, and I've been an Evanston resident since 1982. I've spoken before this body before, specifically about keeping the branch libraries open. I am a special education teacher at Park School, which is located at 828 Main Street, and we are a very small self-contained special education school with, the majority of our students are fall in the severe and profound range. And specifically, I have eight students in my class that the majority are in that range. Most do not talk, they have no expressive language, they will not, and they cannot read, but that does not mean that they cannot learn and increase their receptive language. Every Wednesday, weather permitting, and even through the winter, provided that sidewalks are shoveled, we will walk to the South Branch of the library with three wheelchairs and my two staff, and we will sit and hear stories by one of the librarians for about an hour, and then we will move to the front room and look at books, look at magazines, sometimes fall asleep, sometimes make a little bit of noise, but in the sense that they're still learning, as well as, I think, other members of the, or other patrons of the library. They're able to look at our children and my students and realize that despite their disabilities, they're just like everybody else. They, they don't, they're not going to contract a disease, they're not going to hurt them, hopefully, and they can do the things that many people don't think that they can't do. And I think if we close the branches, and specifically the South Branches, because what, it affects me very much, it would be a very big loss to a vital part of their education. The main branch is not an option for us. The CTA is not wheelchair accessible, and yes, there are buses, but unfortunately, some of my students, because of the extent of their disabilities, will not be able to use the washrooms at the main branch. So, it only allows us to use the South Branch for, for an hour or two, and then get back to school for, for the lack of a better word, for their toileting issues. And if we lose this, then we lose that opportunity. So, I appreciate and ask that you reconsider your decisions about, about closing these branches. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. McAndrew, I'm sorry, I have a question. We should assume, then, that Park School does not have library facilities?
No, you should not assume that. We do have a library. It's about, about the size from where that picture is to where I'm standing. We don't have a librarian, so the, the classroom teachers or the case coordinators can take some of their students down there to read stories. But what we can't do in that library, and what we do at the South Branch has got the community experience of walking to the library, being able to cross the street, recognize stoplights, stop signs, behaving in a public setting as we should behave. We can do that in, in our school setting, but that takes away from the actual experience of going out into the community, into the library.
Alderman Burris?
I have a question about the accessibility issue on restroom facilities at the South Branch, as well as the North Branch. Could, we have, I mean, not the North Branch, the main. You indicated that your students couldn't use the restroom facilities-
That's correct.
-at Maine, but at, at South or Maine?
Either branch. The reason being is that, to my student, I've got three students in wheelchairs. Two cannot, two of the students in my wheelchairs need to be lifted out of their chairs by a, a mechanical device called a Hoyer lift. And unless the main branch has one, which I don't think that they do, it renders either the facilities, either the South Branch or the main branch, for my students, using the bathroom.
Okay, could, could I get a, about the South Branch facilities overall, I, I was under the impression that we were not ADA compliant on, in the South Branch, and could someone actually address that, please?
Would you like? They're not ADA compliant, as far as I know.
Okay, and I, I'm, I'm assuming we're in violation, then, and it's, as, as you bring it up?
Yes.
So, could somebody address that? Thank you.
Or Mr. Gainer, who's responsible for facilities?
It's my understa, Doug Gainer, Director of Parks Recreation Community Service, which includes facility management. It's my understanding that North and South Branches are non-compliant. However, that does not necessarily mean that we're not lawful. Is the, the way I understand the law is that as long as we have a plan and we work towards achieving the plan for ADA over time, that we would be compliant.
Alderman Rainey?
I'd, I'd really like to hear from Brian Barnes on this. He's, he is our official expert.
In reference to the Alderman's question, we did, we did do a survey of both of the library branches, and in my professional opinion, the North Branch is more accessible than the South Branch at this time. The South Branch needs about $50,000 of renovations in order to be accessible at this point. And that was paperwork which I reviewed about six months ago. So, we are not in compliance. There is a plan in place, however, because of the discussions that are ongoing, nothing has been done at this point with, with the South Branch or the North Branch.
If I may just follow up, so would you say Mr. Gainer's characterization was correct?
I would say, in my professional opinion, we are in concordance with the law for the North Branch, but in the South Branch, we are not. Because the South Branch, we have not actually done any work toward making it accessible. We do, however, have plans in, a, a plan on the, on the table, but it's not, it's not been approved by the council yet.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Mr. McAndrew, how, how is it that you're able to access the facility, then, with the students in wheelchair?
We don't. That's the reason why we just use the South Branch, because of a two-hour limit.
I'm not telling, when I say the South Branch, that's what I mean. How are you able to access the South Branch? You lift the, the-
We, we don't. For the, from the, from the moment that we leave our school, which is around nine, around 9:15, 9:30, and walk up to the South Branch, we spend, for the two hours that we're, we're out of our school, our students are fine, unfortunately, because of some of their disabilities, I mean-
No. How are you able to get in the South Branch? It's not accessible.
That's correct.
It's not ADA.
That's correct.
We can, we, the, the doors are wide enough for, for our students in wheelchairs to get through.
Okay.
There is, however, there's a, a series of steps that prevent, without, boy, we, we can get into the front room, and the only way that we can access the, the children's reading room in the back is if they open the door for us, because there, it's a, there's, there's a, an alarm that if you open it up, it sets off the phone. They'll open that up for us because of our, because we can't get down the stairs with those wheelchairs. So, we have to go through, they have to disengage the, the fire alarm momentarily, let us in, and then, then start it back up again.
Right.
Alderman Burris?
Yeah, I wanted to just follow up on the, Mr. Gainer's comment about that we have a plan in place, and so that means we're compliant. I think that this plan has, I mean, at least for, I know, the three years of people, if not longer, have been talking about the non-ADA compliance of the South Branch, and that theoretically there's a plan in place, and nothing's been done. And so, what is that plan? I don't know that we have really heard about that plan, and is it 50,000? Would it, then this be, then the responsibility of obviously the library board, once they take over? What is the ramification on us not being compliant? We're disengaging fire alarms, and you have to go up steps? You know, we shut down Family Focus from getting CDBG money because we couldn't, because it wasn't accessible, but we're continuing to add money and fund something that is not really accessible. And then I have a follow-up question on, so CTA is not accessible for wheelchairs? It is from the main, from Maine?
Well, I'm talking just about the, the L, not, not the buses.
And Metro is accessible as well? Okay, so, Metro, Metro, you can get wheelchairs on Metro from Maine, others, an elevator there, I'm pretty sure.
Correct.
Right? And then there's, once you get to Davis, I believe there's an elevator at Davis as well? Okay, just, I just want clarification, but the CT, the L does not, correct? All right. But the buses that are on Chicago Avenue are accessible for wheelchairs?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. McAndrew, do we have the, or maybe Mr. Barnes, do we have the Hoyer lifts at the main library, in our restroom facilities?
You know, no, as far as I know, they don't.
Or in any city facility?
I, I, actually, I'd be quite surprised, because they're, they're fairly expensive, and to have them there for the limited use of, of individuals with disabilities to use the facilities, I think would be, I'm, I'm not sure if it would be cost-effective, if you know what I mean? It's just very difficult.
City Manager?
Can we ask Brian? You asked a question of Mr. McAndrew about some-
The city manager would like to answer.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And I, and I don't think anyone's disputing in the room that we do not have the lift, so that just-
Okay. So, I just wondered if-
No, that's why she asked a question. So, okay, so that's, the question's been asked and answered. I think it's important to, to characterize what is lawful, what is unlawful, and what is accessible. Clearly, if we don't have a lift, and there's a patron in, in the library that needs a lift to use a bathroom, that's not accessible to that patron.
Correct.
So, there are multiple places of our city government that are not accessible to every resident would like to receive accessibility. Then there is the law, and what we do is we do, what we do is we follow the law. The law provides for us to have a plan to move toward accessibility. Does that mean we're not accessible in some locations to some patrons? Absolutely. But we are not breaking the law. So, I think it's important to make those distinctions. We continue to strive always to make things as accessible as possible, but first and foremost, we want to comply with the law.
So, as a follow-up question, I, are there other city facilities, then, besides the two branch libraries, for which we have a plan that we're working towards compliance with ADA that are not?
Again, I think we, we, we are, we have different levels of compliance with different facilities. I believe we have plans for all. A lot of this comes with financial consequences, and over time, we have brought those issues to the council, and I think we have made improvements over time as we can. Again, it becomes accessible versus what is lawful, and I think we feel very comfortable that we are within the law, but we are always striving to do more.
Alderman Tendem?
I guess my question is, are there other facilities that are in a similar situation as the branch library facilities?
I, I would say probably every city facility has issues that we would want to improve upon for accessibility.
Yeah, there's no question, and it goes from something that's very simple, like a door handle that's round, that is not accessible. It has to be a lever. And we have a number of examples throughout all. I just took a quick look at our capital improvement program, and the two branches, as a matter of fact, have in the, to be totally renovated, not just for ADA, has almost $300,000 that's been proposed for those kinds of impro, you know, for improvements in the two branches. Now, a good part of that would be ADA. Anytime there are any improvements made, they must include ADA compliance, but obviously with funding. But the city manager's correct, a lot of it is based on funding, as long as we're within the law. And I think the law, though, has a specific, and this sounds maybe harsh and, and unsympathetic, but the law has language in it that says, "A reasonable accommodation." And we try to find that to the best of our ability.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think the bottom line here is that despite the lack of funds and the steps, turning off alarms, making all these accommodations, and the limited time that you can spend there because of certain restraints, it's still the best option. I, you know these, these young men and women, you know the field, you're making that decision based on your expertise, and this is the best thing we have to offer you, correct?
It is the only thing you could offer us.
Thank you.
Alderman Holmes?
I just wanted to follow up on Alderman Burris's comment in terms of that we enforce the law with other organizations within the city, then we need to do that for ourselves as well. I think that's a point, and I don't want that lost on anyone, because we certainly have done that in the past to other, particularly not-for-profits that I'm very familiar with, that it took forever to get done. So, we just have to make sure that we do the same for ourselves as well.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
So, is there, I don't understand the intervention from both Alderman Burris and Alderman Holmes. Are we saying we're not enforcing the law in our facilities? Because I thought that the law is that you make sure you have a plan in place.
Absolutely, and I'm saying that I know that there was a plan in place, because I developed it, and yet and still, there were penalties done that still would have been within the law, because reasonable accommodations were made. So, I'm just simply saying that when we enforce-
Being for Family Focus?
Yes, I'm referring back to that. So, that when we, we enforce, then we need to do it for the city as well, if we're going to do that. It should be, I'm just talking about equity, that's all.
Okay, because my understanding with regard to Family Focus, the Community Development Block Grant Committee sought a greater contribution and participation of the parent organization to make sure that it moved forward with improvement, and did withhold contribution of federal grant to, to that entity until it was, it had complied with the law, but I didn't think that there was, I'm, I'm not sure that the two are comparable. That's what I'm trying to, to struggle for. How are they, you know, comparable? I understand, I understand what you're saying, and I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement, I'm just trying, I understand, I'm just trying to understand.
I don't know that this is the time at a public hearing to argue that point.
No, it's not, the point is, we dealing with the South Branch, this was up for question right now, whether it is in compliance, whether we are acting legally. Because if we decide to approve the budget and keep them open, there will be some additional steps that we would need to take. And so, in the context of that discussion, I think it's important for us to understand the criticism as to whether or not we are obeying the law, or whether we are in violation of the law, and what we need to do. And when she raised the issue of the Family Focus, I didn't think that the, the two were comparable in the context of our action or inaction.
Okay. Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Burris, and then I'd like to remind you, this is a public hearing, and I think we should go back to hearing from the public.
Well, what happened at Family Focus-
Well, what happened at Family Focus certainly affected the public. The Community Development Block Grant Committee had absolutely nothing to do with withholding funds from Family Focus. We were ordered by HUD to not fund the activities at Family Focus until they became accessible. And, you know, that was very difficult for us, but there evidently are different levels of requirements, and I think if the, no, that's exactly what happened, Alderman Holmes. HUD told us, we had directives from HUD not to, not to fund them. But, you know, I think we're talking, I think the specific issue with the South Branch is if people have to be taken around to another door and disabled fire alarms and things, I mean, that's not even close to being accessible, and I think it's outrageous that we sit here saying, oh, we've got a plan and we're working on it, and different buildings are accessible in different ways for differently-enabled people. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that's an absolute joke when it comes to being ADA accessible. I mean, just not. So, I mean, if people have to be lifted and carried, the bathroom issue is a whole other thing. I mean, that, the lifts, I agree with what the city manager said about that, but, so the, I think the, both Aldermen are correct about Family Focus having to suffer for not being compliant with certain ADA requirements. But I don't think that their problem was anywhere near as severe as the problem at the South Branch Library. I think, I think it's a much more shameful situation there.
Thank you. Alderman Burris, and then Diane Allen, it is, I promise your turn. I hope you're still here. There you are.
My comment is that part of what happened with Family Focus too, and what could happen with the South Branch as well is we're ignoring it because citizens haven't gone to complain. With Family Focus, a very vocal citizen with a lot of power went to the feds and complained and raised a big stink about it, which she should have. And if that happens here as well, we are in the same boat. No one has done it. That's the issue, that no one has raised the big problem that it's not accessible. Once a citizen, once the disabled community says, this is a problem, and by golly, we're not going to stand for it, you know darn good and well, we're going to be in a lawsuit.
Diane Allen.
May I make a que, I erroneously said that that was a fire alarm, I was informed that it's a security alarm. My apology.
Good morning, all. My name is Diane Allen, and I've lived at 330 Barton Avenue for the last 26 years. I am trustee of the Evanston Library Board. My comments today are extremely brief, and they really are directed to Madam Mayor and the council. At some time in the past, each of you wished to participate in the governance of this dynamic, diverse, and vocal community. And now you sit as elected officials in the positions you sought. Be careful what you wish for. Just as the citizens of Evanston must trust that you act in the best interest of the community, so you must trust that the boards and commissions created and confirmed by your authority will do the same. Those boards and commissions bring energy and expertise to bear on issues that affect the entire community. They work along with you in the same spirit of community service. I encourage each of you to reaffirm your confidence in the library board by accepting the board's present plan for services in the next fiscal year. And I encourage each of you to collaborate over the coming months as we develop a realistic long-term strategy for library services in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Martha Aronson. I live at 1023 Simpson Street. I've been an Evanston resident for over 36 years. I'm the executive director of CNE, which is Child Care Network of Evanston. And I would like to thank you, Madam Mayor, City Manager, and members of the City Council for this opportunity to speak today on behalf of Human Services and specifically our youngest, most vulnerable citizens. The Mental Health Board funds support over 150 low-income working families in their opportunity to access high-quality services that would otherwise not be available to them. High quality means, high-quality early care and education, and it also means support for mental health issues where children and families have no other resources than through the early childhood programs which they choose for their, the working parents choose. The reason that is because children who have, children are labeled with a disability if they, if it's over 30% of the, of their abilities. So the other 30% or less that might have a speech issue or some sort of sensory issue are not being served unless they have attended a program where the mental health service, the Mental Health Board supports services for children with special needs. The other thing is that parents who are low-income working parents cannot always take time off from work to get their child to state or federally mandated services because they would lose their job. And we have, we know of families who have had to quit their work to care for their children with their special needs. High quality also means high-quality care and early education, and we know that, we know through research that $7 to $14 are saved in high-quality early education for children. It's saved later on in their lives with future remediation or other social services. So I thank you for reinstating or for clarifying the fact that we will be supported, hopefully at the full amount, that Human Services will be supported at the full amount, and I appreciate being able to say that publicly.
Thank you.
Lori Summers, 1410 Wesley Avenue. I am also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the last five and a half years. I just wanted to touch base really quickly as somebody who works in architecture and works with designing buildings for accessibility literally every day, that there's a big difference between an existing building and a new building and the efforts that we make to make existing buildings accessible. And there is another huge difference between items that receive federal funding and items that don't. So those are very key differences to pay attention to when you are considering those issues. I just wanted to speak really quickly regarding the general budget. I guess I will be in the minority here, and I'm okay with that, but I do encourage the city to continue to look at the essential services and really, really consider essential services. Essential services are maintenance, clearing roads, you know, maintaining the parks and maintaining the roads and, you know, all of those sorts of things. Those are essential services, and I think that those fall into one column, and everything else is a social service or a political service that we're trying to do and we may very well want to do, but we can only do those if we have the money to do them. And I would love to see us be able to reduce it so much that, you know, we don't have to increase the tax, even to cover the pension funding, which would certainly be an essential and lawfully required thing. Unfortunately, that does require reduction of outreach services probably in these harsh times, and that's just the way it is. And when things get better, then we will hopefully be able to increase the outreach that we are available to provide to the various citizens of the community. Frankly, I guess I misread an article last year. I thought we'd already closed the branch libraries last year. That was my understanding when I read an article, but maybe I misunderstood that article. I agree with closing the branch libraries. I grew up in a town that had one library. It was downtown, it was a long ways away, there was no public transportation, but, you know, you make efforts and you find a ride from a friend or, you know, you do everything that you can to get resource, to get to those resources when you don't have, when you don't always have availability. And I think that it's more important that as much money be put into our one main key library and make that as best as it can be. So I can't even believe that I'm talking about that this year, but I guess I thought it was, but that would be an example of, I think, a difference between an essential service and an outreach service. So I just wanted to speak to that very quickly. I also wanted to speak as someone from the zoning board and someone who's very familiar with community development departments regarding the position and elimination of the zoning administrator position. For those of you who don't understand how some of that, that might work, there is a requirement that there be a person in the city that is the official zoning administrator. Now, that need not necessarily be a full position, but there is a requirement for a zoning administrator that's an official position, and you need to understand that. And if you're considering eliminating that position, then you need to understand who is going to be the zoning administrator for the city. I didn't see that outlined in the proposal in terms of who would be getting that position. And that person is responsible for the final decisions regarding, regarding many zoning issues in that city, in the city. So that person needs to be educated and capable of making those types of decisions, and that person also needs to be able to defend those types of positions before the zoning board. So before you make those type, make reductions in that area, not only are you thinking about workload, but you really need to think about how the organization and work of that department comes into play and who is going to take over that job, and are they qualified to take over that official position, which is required by, I believe it's the state, lawyers could help me out, but it is a required position. And that's something very important to understand. I know that there's been a lot of changeover in that department in the last year, and I know that morale is very poor, and I feel that the leadership, the leadership in that department has been lacking because of all the changes, and to be making even more very distinct changes to that department without proper leadership who understands how it works is, is quite problematic. I would also just point out in terms of the people who put together the budgeting information that was put on the website, in the sections under, in the sections under the various departments and at the full-time equivalent trap section at the end, the positions that are proposed to be eliminated are still included in the 2011 full-time equivalent count. And so that should really be fixed so that it's clear for somebody like me who might jump to a specific section trying to check a few different things, what actually is happening because that was not carried through. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, City Manager.
And I appreciate the speaker raising that issue. The budget that is presented contains all of the positions that are being proposed to eliminate, that's the council's decision. And so if the council makes those choices, that would then be reflected in the final budget. And so that, it's explained at the very beginning of the document, I understand.
It is explained at the beginning in the, in the basic, but, but as somebody who's looking at it, it's my assumption that, that everything that in here under 2011 is a proposal. I mean, that's the whole point of this document, is that it's a proposal, and whatever city council decides at the end is final. So presumably, when I look at the sections that have actual budget dollar numbers, those are proposed numbers, and those dollar numbers presume the proposed changes. And I think outlining things, other outlines should follow that same proposed standard so that there's consistency between the various sections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mike Vasilko. Oh, sorry, Alderman Jean-Baptiste.
Can City Manager clarify the issue of the requirement for a zoning administrator?
I believe the speaker is correct, and another employee will be designated with that title.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, Mike Vasilko, Kristen Harris, Junad Riske, and Tana Paul.
My name's Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue. Many, if not all, of the budget decisions you will make will directly affect the most disadvantaged in our community, including the planned service cuts and the proposed taxes and service fees, fee increases. Some of us continue to challenge the justification for raising taxes and fees and the cutting of services because we know for a fact that there are, that there are other options. We could have, can, and should put into place development that will end the yearly cycle of dismantling what Evanston stands for. That said, there are some in the, in the community who can afford the tax increases, but that fact doesn't make it, make the practice of raising taxes the right thing to do. The most disadvantaged people will suffer the most, and that's, I just think, a reality. I have continued to research all aspects of the economic development proposal I've been fostering, including the history of the lakefront. Along the way, I find, I find more than I care to accept when it comes to the treatment of the disadvantaged in Evanston. From Evanston's very beginning, there was a place for some people to exist and a place for others, the happy few, to enjoy all that Evanston has to offer, especially those who live closest to the lakefront. A few leaders from our past worked to make their constituents a more equal part of Evanston. Evanston's YMCA was founded in 1885, but it took the efforts of Dr. Harris, William Huntington, Reverend Talley, and others to create the Emerson Street YMCA 30 years later. This was needed because African-Americans were not allowed in the established facility. Taken down in the 80s to build Northwestern's Business Incubation Center, there remains no historical marker to document how important the Emerson Street Y was to the dignity of many in our community. In addition to her focus on women's rights and education for all, Frances Willard saw Evanston as a tourist destination. Willard worked to advance economic development in the form of tourism. She realized this was an untapped resource of revenue. A hundred years ago, Evanston filled the length of the shoreline to make it a more desirable place, yet not all were welcome. Fast forward to a few, a few years ago, Evanston approves in principle the beautification of the lakefront. $50 million of taxpayer money is proposed to beautify the lakefront, but who will really enjoy the fruits of this expense? Statements have been made that the efforts will also make it easier for all in Evanston, West and South wards, to get to the lakefront. I believe this is a disingenuous smokescreen. The fact is that $50 million of taxpayer money will benefit those who live closest to the lake, including Northwestern University, without, without any economic development plan to pay the bill. The economic development plan I have fostered is designed specifically to benefit all of Evanston, not one specific group. Property taxpayers would realize relief, the library system would realize relief and be able to plan future growth and to serve all wards. Pension fund could be paid for without additional taxpayer burdens. Economic growth for all could be a reality. There is a way to solve our economic problems. Please act swiftly regarding the most certain and profitable aspects of this proposal. Thank you.
Kristen Harris. I need the sign-up sheet back when you're done. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, and Aldermen and Women, thank you so much for your time this morning, and thank you for the ability to provide public comment. My name is Kristen Harris of 3016 Central Street. I am speaking in support of the Branch Libraries. I'm speaking much more briefly and much less eloquently than the others who have already spoken in support and will speak in support of the Branch Libraries. I just wanted to bring up two points. One is that, and I've also submitted written comments to the council previously within the last 12 months, but this, this point I've overlooked. And that is, I understand that in budget discussions, we typically look at, you know, accounting principles and things that show up as line items. One thing that isn't necessarily as quantifiable, that is a value for, at least I can speak with regard to the North Branch Library. Because of the, because of the depth of the community ties there, we have been able to retain retired library volunteers, and I think in particular of Muriel, I don't know her last name. But we have been able to retain and, and have the services of volunteers who do not show up on the budget at all, who do not take any funds from the city, but who provide a great service with their lifetime expertise. So, I'd like to recognize them by keeping the Branch Libraries open. Another point, and this is my final point, Alderman Burris, I heard you, I think, at the very beginning of your initial comments, expressing concern about, expressing concern about there not being sufficient library accessibility to citizens of our community in, in other wards, for example, in the Deep South, I think you said, and in the West. And to the extent that, first of all, personally, as a fellow citizen of Evanston, I share your concern, and I would welcome expanding the Branch Library services in the budget to extend another Branch Library. And I, to, to my understanding, although I'm not in the leadership of the Evanston, of the Friends of the Evanston Public Libraries, I believe there have been great efforts expended throughout, throughout the course of this year to, I see you squinching your face, you may not believe me, so I'll try, I'll try.
I know exactly.
Finish, let her finish.
Okay. My understanding and, and other, others in the, in the, others who are actually in the leadership of the organization probably speak to this better than I can, but I understand that, that there have been efforts made to reach out to, to wards in the West, for example, some, some sort of efforts involving Boku Cafe and the farmer's market. And I think that that's one way in which actually, all of this discussion about such a small, small part of the budget, as I understand, less, far less than 1% of the total city budget, has actually strengthened our city in terms of permitting the different wards to see what is going on in other wards, so that all wards can be better served by Branch Library services. And I'm sorry, did you have a comment, Alderman Burris, or a question? Okay.
Alderman Burris.
I think maybe you should get your facts straight about exactly how much money was raised, and exactly what kind of outreach was done in the South and West. I found it actually insulting, what they considered to be outreach. So, I would suggest everyone who says that there was outreach, really, what does that mean? A rack of books sitting in the Robert Crown, and that's outreach? I'm not sure that that's outreach. And is it really for all citizens, and we're looking at this globally? I would just, I would, maybe, I know, since you said you're not in the leadership of the Friends Group, good for you, but that you may want to look at your facts. And if you want Branch Library in the West and the Deep South, I would love to see where that money's coming from, if you want to take away from the disabled community, or fire, or police. So, maybe look at the budget a little bit more and figure out exactly what that outreach meant.
Alderman Burris, I will respond to your statement. First and foremost, when we sign in, on the sign-in sheets, that's actually Madam Mayor Wyatt asked for the sign-up sheet, there are instructions there about the way in which citizen comment is to be conducted. Included in that is that we're, this is to, I think, I'm going by memory here, engage in dialogue in a civil and respectful manner. Okay. So, I would encourage you to lead us by example in that.
I think I'm responding exactly to what, to what you, if you're, if you're going to make a comment, then make an informed comment.
Secondly, Alderman, I am sorry, Alderman Burris has insinuated that I do not know the facts, and I would like, and that she is concerned that the record is inaccurate as to the amount of funds raised and the extent of the outreach that was engaged in in the past year. I certainly have the ability to take 30 seconds to respond to that. A mayor, sorry, Alderman Burris, after, after me and a couple speakers, a citizen named Jeff Smith will speak. He will be able to outline exactly the efforts that have been, point one. Point two, I was talking about the way in which the prospect, the prospect of closing the Branch Libraries has actually brought the city a little bit closer together. I think that there, that if you compare, no matter how minimal you believe the efforts to have been in this past year with those of prior years, or with those of, of the city of Evanston previously, that this is an improvement in the correct direction. And I would ask that you not malign those volunteers, myself not included, because I did not provide that effort in volunteer time, to not malign those, those volunteer efforts that were very good-hearted, to try to reach out with library access to those beyond the wards in which the libraries are located. Thank you.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
I just think that process-wise, you know, we will have a bunch of time to argue with one another. So, you know, I, I think we need to just wait here as much as possible, and let that then inform us so that we can engage in the deliberations with one another. Because I don't want to discourage anyone who wants to come forward to make whatever statement, whether it is fully informed or otherwise.
Thank you. Junaid.
Thank you. I want to talk about some accountability today. I'm going to go through some bullet points, basically. First thing I'd like to know is how short we fell on the leaf collection program in terms of the revenues for the stickers. And my, my opinion of the whole thing was, the whole thing should have been privatized with waste treatment, and the taxpayers would have come out ahead. And now, we're looking at, trying to get some more money from a transfer fee thing, which will probably end us up in a legal suit. So, next bullet point, I would like to know how much we wasted on the Water Interconnect study between Evanston and Wilmette. I think it was technically not a very good project. And basically, why would you connect a large system, which is Evanston, up with Wilmette? And why aren't we, wouldn't have we wanted to connect with Chicago if this was going to be an emergency system? And I mean, I'm sure I'll get some staff member to run up here and discuss this, but bottom line, it was a waste of money. And I keep on asking, what type of real models do you have for business of this water operation, considering you raised the rates 10% now, and you're going to raise them a 30%? That was the plan that this consultant showed. There wasn't a study there of a business model, it was just a raise-the-rate deal. And I think it's just unacceptable, and there's no accountability in that. I also would like an accounting of this retirement system issue that was done by a previous city manager. Most of us probably saw this in the Tribune. Retirement cost, cost towns, one, it actually, Evanston's at the top of the list on the front page, $1.2 million for four city employees for retirement. We need an accounting of this. We need to know really what the whole thing costs, because there were more than four employees that retired. And I think this is probably buried in the budget somewhere, but these are enormous costs that we ought to have accounting for. And we need an accounting for this. This wasn't done under the current city manager, but still, it was done. Also, I'd like to have some accounting on what I call the open positions in the budget. Those positions are held open, they allow departments room for flexibility. I'd like to understand how those are really kept in the budget and how they're used to basically pad up the budget in those departments. And I'm curious about how that's done. Because at the end, the middle of last year, a lobbyist was hired, and there really wasn't a discussion of how he came into the budget. My next bullet point is 311. I can file a FOIA on this, but I'd like to know, where is the cost? I heard $800,000 was the new cost for this. I'd like to see, hear somebody give an explanation. Supposedly, the council hasn't approved this, but it seems to be going ahead with full steam. I also frankly don't understand why we need to run an operation from 7:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night, when you're going to shut down, you're shutting down library hours, and you're shutting down, you're going to have the number of trees we plant on our parkways, and we've got to have some operation running from 7:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night, when the city doesn't run those hours. To me, this is a waste of money. And we don't, it's money we can ill afford. And I, you know, frankly, find that ridiculous. And if, the next item is capital budgeting. I've said this a couple times, you know, it's very interesting, every time we do the budget in this last year or two, we get the statement, well, we don't really understand the capital budget, let's put it off a little bit, or let's put it off. Which what, what it continues to tell me is the city is not in control of its capital. And how we're dealing with the control of our capital is to say, well, let's just shut it all down, basically, because we don't have the money to run it. What I've seen here is there's no year-to-year accountability on these capital projects. Staff can propose projects from year to year, and they're not, the numbers aren't right, the numbers don't go from year to year correctly. I don't see really a lot of planning and scope in some of these projects, they make no sense, like the Interconnect project. And there's no proper accounting method of running these projects on a day-to-day basis that I've seen here. I did file a FOIA on that, looked at it, and it makes no sense. It's a problem. And my next item is, let's see. I guess the, the other issue I have is, some of the speakers up here have been saying that there are certain services that are prime, you know, basically can't be cut, because they're really part of the city. They're, they're so important to the city, I think someone talked about street cleaning and other things, fire department, police. Well, I think the real issue with these departments is, are they operating efficiently? Because these departments are huge departments in the budget, and they're taking a lot of money. And then, people are arguing about a few hundred thousand dollars for a library. For instance, in other communities, fire departments are not run with full, large numbers of all full-time employees. They're under contract positions. Some of those positions are contract. They blend full-time employees with contractors. There was a, actually, an interesting thing on TV, a little beagle up in Gray's Lake was in a fire, and it was on TV, but it was the Gray's Lake Fire Department went in there. They're 25% contractors. So, they, that saved the little beagle's life, but I think it was pretty interesting. But basically, every department, a lot of these departments here are not, are run very much, I would say, in a gold-plated manner. Basically, they can be run a lot differently, other communities run them differently, and they can save cost. And I think there's, there's definitely resistance here to save cost, it's just to maintain the status quo. And then, I'm going to close on my last point, which I talked about probably several years ago, and that's Alderman medical benefits. Several years ago, Aldermen were able to get full family coverage for $35 for a PPO. Basically, they could cover their whole family for $35 a month for Blue Cross Blue Shield coverage. Now, the, before the former city manager left, she raised their rates to, to be parity with city employees, so they had to pay around 180 or 7, 170, whatever. But in my view, part-time Aldermen should not be getting medical benefits when we're in this kind of crisis. And it appears to me, this has nothing to do with every four years. This can be changed immediately, the rates can be adjusted to make Aldermen pay full cost for medical benefits, and that can put an end to this. It costs the taxpayers over $100,000 to provide this coverage, and I frankly think it's time it has to come to an end. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I apologize for not having said earlier that Alderman Wynn could not be here because of a family obligation until 10, well, 11. Until now. Until exactly now. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Tana Paul. I am with Metropolitan Family Services in downtown Evanston. I've worked in the Evanston community for 24 years. And yesterday, I was interviewed by a magazine, and she asked me to tell a story about a client. And as I was sitting here, thinking about what to, to say up here, it occurred to me that that particular client, if she felt comfortable, would probably appreciate me thanking you on her behalf. So, I thought I'd just tell you a little bit about her. This client was pretty severely sexually abused as a child. When she turned to alcohol and drugs, I'm sorry, I always have a little bit of anxiety in public speaking, but when she turned to alcohol and drugs, as a teen, she couldn't support her habit, and then turned to prostitution. She became pregnant, and her child was born with severe disabilities. I think that this was kind of a wake-up call for her, and she came to us for help. It wasn't an easy road. I'm not going to stand here and say, in three months, everything was perfect. It was a long time, there were many setbacks. But this client was amazing, she had such determination and resiliency. And I'm happy to say that we were able to, she had reached all of her goals, and we were able to close her work with us recently. And I guess, you know, if, if she could be here, she would thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Virginia Mann, Beth McLennan, Jeff Smith. And John Storson, you ceded your time to Junaid, so that's my three.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity.
My name's Virginia Mann, I live at 3004 Normandy Place in Evanston, and I am the co-founder of Tree to Rescue Evanston Elms. Nearly six years ago, I joined nearly 500 other residents of the city of Evanston in these council chambers to encourage the city council to act in a fiscally and environmentally responsible way by adopting a tree injection program. And on that night, the council actually adopted a program to inject every elm tree in Evanston. Later on, that was changed before it could be implemented, and they adopted a partial injection program. Some of those 500 residents were here because they loved trees. Some of those 500 residents were here because of their concern for the environment. Some of us were here because of our concern for the economics of the tree, elm tree program here in Evanston. And that's what I would like to focus on today, as I always have, on the economics of Evanston's beloved elm trees. According to city staff, we have approximately 2,800 elm trees in the city of Evanston. Today, we inject about 2,200 of them. The cost to inject the remaining 600 elm trees would be about $120,000 every three years. According to a city memo of January 12, 2010, the injections are 99.38% effective. That is an astounding number, and far beyond even trees' expectations on the success of the program. That same memo said that we performed 29 cutouts after running around town and scouting these trees all summer long, and cut down 81 of the non-injected trees. Again, there is a cost associated with this program of scouting trees, having staff members drive around in city vehicles all summer long, looking at elm trees, determining whether or not they are diseased, determining whether or not they can be saved with a cutout, and then performing the cutout. It's a huge use of staff resources and time and other resources that has not been defined by the city. Additionally, there is a cost to removing the trees. Last year, according to city records, we removed 81 mature, majestic, beautiful elm trees from our city. And according to city staff back then, and I don't know what the cost is today, the cost of removing a single tree is $3,050. So, in 2009, we spent $247,050 removing un-injected elm trees. This is insanity. If we inject the other trees, we would spend $40,000 additional a year, instead of $247,000 a year to cut them down. We could eliminate or, or reduce the need for scouting trees, we could virtually eliminate the cutout of trees, we could virtually eliminate the removal of elm trees. It's time to adopt the program that the city, when it had thousands of signatures from city residents and hundreds of residents here asking for it, adopted six years ago. Adopt this program, save hundreds of thousands of dollars, and save our beautiful elm trees. We are losing our ash trees, there's no option on that, we can't save that, they make up, at the time, they made up 15% of Evanston's tree population. We have proven, cost-effective, environmental- We have a proven, cost-effective, environmentally responsible program in our elm tree injection program. It is the fiscally, the environmentally, and I believe the morally right thing to do, to adopt a program like that and stop wasting valuable city resources, especially at a time when those resources could be better used for human resource programs, or branch libraries, or whatever you guys decide they are most appropriately used for, or, most importantly perhaps, just not to raise our tax dollars as much. So I would encourage the city to take a very close look at how we are running our elm tree program. They are a very valuable part of this community. They have tremendous support. I have been impressed with the number of people who've reached out to me in the last few days to ask how they can help get this done. And I would encourage all of you to do the environmentally and fiscally responsible thing, and once again, vote, but this time actually implement a full elm injection program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I've been asked if we could take a five-minute break, so we're going to do that now. The next speaker will be Beth McLennan, Jeff Smith, and then Larry Biandi and Jan Weeks.
Hello, my name is Beth McLennan. I live at 100A South Boulevard. I am a volunteer member of the Zoning Board of Appeals here in Evanston. And I'm here today to speak up in defense of the zoning administrator position. This position, it requires a lot of specialized knowledge. You need to know and understand the zoning ordinance, you need to know and understand the master plan of the city and all the additional component plans that make up the master plan. This is not knowledge that can be easily learned in a month, or three months, or a year. I think it's a full-time job. The department has already been cut drastically, and I believe that any more cuts that are made to this department, and they're not going to be able to effectively do their job. They have to go out and about in the city to look for zoning compliance, they also need to maintain the desk and maintain the phones, and they need enough staff to be able to do that and do that well. The zoning department and its services, they're essential for Evanston to function properly. We at the zoning board depend on them to be able to do our job, and I just urge the city council to really consider this when they talk about rolling this position, which is a full-time position, into another position. It's going to dilute the quality of work that can be done, and it's going to certainly make it so that the work can't be done in a timely fashion. And we already run into that, as it is, where people are waiting months to get their cases heard on, at the ZBA, and I'm assuming that it's going to be even more difficult if you eliminate that position. And then finally, I wanted to add, it is also my understanding that the zoning fees right now are some of the lowest on the North Shore, and that's something that perhaps the council could look at as a means to increase some revenue. So, thank you for giving the time to speak. Oh, and I also wanted to mention, Alderman Burris, you were asking about walkability. I'm an urban planner. Walkability is typically defined as a half-mile. Hopefully, that helps. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison, and I'm not here to speak on behalf of any particular group, but by way of background, I do work with the Evanston Public Library friends. I also was active in the Climate Action Plan, serve on the board of the Democratic Party of Evanston, and I'm active with Citizens for Greener Evanston and former president of Central Street Neighbors Association, and I've knocked on doors in every ward in this town and made phone calls into those wards for a long time. A year ago, I stood before this body when we were having a discussion that was on much the same subject with regard to the library, and I asked this council to consider the costs, because not all revenue items that we proposed for the budget, we factor costs into, although we should. We sometimes talk about a project and it's going to generate all these wonderful dollars, and we don't talk about the downside. And similarly, we talk about cuts, and we don't consider the costs of those, but any economist or planner would. I understand that the city has limited resources, and so my question, which might have been taken as rhetorical a year ago, hasn't been answered, and so I've labored to come up with some rough estimates of what the costs of closing the neighborhood branch libraries would be. And my rough estimates are that for the next five years, there would be at least a half million dollars in costs, which would be absorbed by different sectors of our community differently. I'm not going to read this entire memorandum that I've prepared, but I'll forward it by email or give hard copies to the council and to the staff after I speak today. But let me summarize some of the highlights. The main thing to consider is that of the 140,000 annual visits to the neighborhood branches, those are about 24% of all library visits, they generate about 17% of the circulation, maybe higher than that. If those visits were eliminated, they won't translate into 140,000 additional visits to the main branch. I think we can assume optimistically that about half of them would become main branch visits, while about a quarter would go to Wilmette or Skokie or Chicago branches, and probably a quarter simply become library visits that are no longer made. People staying at home, or buying books from Amazon, or maybe going to Blockbuster, or just reading less. The direct cost to the city in revenues, I calculate at conservatively $5,500 in library revenues, representing approximately 12% reduction in the fees, fines, and video rentals that are generated by the system. Another $2,300 to $3,500 in parking revenue, because you get more parking revenue probably out of the branch libraries than you do main library visits because of the availability of an hour of free parking at the public garages. Sales tax revenues. Studies that have looked at this, both our Evanston Public Library friends and formal studies, and studies by, for example, the city of Sunnyvale, California, find that walking visits and other visits to libraries tend to generate an approximate $10 in associated purchases per sale. It's not a lot, but it adds up. Even if we assume that half of that is recouped by purchases from people who now go downtown instead of the branches, it adds up to $17,000 in lost sales tax revenue. So there alone, you're ending up with about $25,000 in lost city revenue. Bear in mind that the $150,000 difference between the library board's proposed budget and the city manager's proposed library budget has to also be offset by the costs of closing down the libraries, moving the collections, administrative costs, et cetera, which I believe there's a $40,000 price tag that's been associated with that by the city itself. Now, a larger figure is the direct costs to the community, and particularly consumers of branch library services, but also to the community itself. Some people might only go to the library once every two years, some might go once every two weeks, some go once every two days. There are multiple studies that have now been done around the country indicating that the direct value of library services to community residents is at least one and a half times what's paid in taxes to support the libraries, and the most common number I've seen is four times that. But I use just a one-and-a-half-time figure, and it's generally calculated by replacement costs. That is what it would cost to obtain library services from the private sector. And some studies indicate a greater multiple. But even if you assume that the branch libraries were more expensive to operate per user, and I think analysis indicates the opposite, a $400,000 annual operating cost of the two neighborhood branches represents at least $400,000 in value to the population of Evanston. But closing the branches wouldn't result in a loss of all this value, because some of it would go downtown. So again, I'm assuming that if 60% of those services is replaced by using main branch services, then you end up with a $160,000 annual cost that's distributed to the population of Evanston. A larger cost potentially is the direct cost to homeowners, and this goes to walkability. Walkability studies, and you might look most recently at a study called Walking the Walk, How Walkability Raises Home Values for U.S. Cities, done by the CEOs for Cities Organization in 2009. They estimate that a library within walking distance has an average property value increase of between $500 and $3000, and it's more in urban areas. In a city like Chicago, it can be as up to $30,000 depending on the, on the neighborhood. And a library counts for one point in these studies. And so if you assume very conservatively that for each neighborhood branch, there's 1,000 homes within walking distance that are gaining $1,000, or actually already have $1,000 in property value, for which the homeowners have already paid, and for which they're paying taxes on every year, then closing those two branches, it's not going to show up as one home's value is going to drop precipitously, but the realtors I've talked to confirm what the studies show, that it is a factor in saleability. And I think conservatively, two branches, 1,000 homes, $1,000 value each, close the branches, destroying $2 million in Evanston property value. Now, some of that will be recouped when the libraries are replaced by other businesses, but a bar in a family neighborhood, or a dry cleaners, doesn't have exactly the same value. And an interesting aspect of this is that if levies remain constant, this is revenue-neutral to the city, so the city's not necessarily losing the money. The taxes that are reflected in lower property values and lower assessments are made up by people in the neighborhoods who don't have libraries within walking distance. So it's actually a shift, if you close the libraries, to people farthest from them. The sales tax we talked about losing, if you use an average 8% figure, if you multiply that back out, that's a direct cost to businesses and sales of $200,000. So you add up the direct costs to the city, the consumers, the homeowners, and the businesses, and you get $577,000 and change. Now, added to that have to be some larger indirect costs. I already mentioned the delayed costs to homeowners in non-branch neighborhoods. There would be minor real estate transfer tax costs. But I want to mention five uncalculated and harder to quantify costs, and I hope you'll forgive me for not having quantified them, because I'm just a citizen working on this on a volunteer basis. Right now, Evanston Public Library friends, were it not involved in this conversation we didn't think we'd be having right now, could be out there getting grants, but the lack, the uncertainty of the status of the branches really inhibits that. I think you could be looking conservatively at $30,000 to $150,000 a year in grant money that could be coming into Evanston if we knew where we were going. Second is municipal branding opportunities that we're forfeiting. We want to brand ourselves as a community for knowledge workers and information businesses. Well, if you want to do that, how do you do that? Do you say that you want to, that Evanston is a city that's closed two out of its three libraries? Or do you say Evanston is a city that has a library within walking distance, within a mile of every child who moves into Evanston? What's going to attract an information worker or business?
Jeff, can you wind it down?
I will, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I have three more points. The third is an economic stimulus aspect. The Central Street Plan, which was adopted by the city council and which was proposed by and approved by the Plant Commission, identified the north branch library in particular as an activity generator. Any economist in the world will look upon a branch library as economic development and economic stimulus. So to close it results in economic anti-stimulus and anti-development. There is a walkability factor that I mentioned. There are educational costs, there are political and social costs, and finally, there is the cost to our civic sense, because there hasn't been a movement like the Evanston Public Library friends for a while in Evanston, but it's not the only one, it's not the first one. And what damage do we do to our sense of ourselves as a community if we tell people who have worked so hard that their work has been in vain and that their efforts are disrespected? The citizens of Evanston are one of our greatest assets, and their efforts, their energy and their initiative should be leveraged, not devalued.
Thank you. Mr. Biandi? No.
Joel, do you want to?
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be with you. My name is Larry Biandi. My name is Larry Biandi. I live at 2040 Brown. I've been an Evanston resident for 18 years. I'm also the advocacy coordinator at Progress Center for Independent Living in Forest Park Run Advocacy Organization for People with Disabilities. We serve all of suburban county, including Evanston. I attended the city council meeting on October 25th, 2010. The council informed the audience that Evanston has three Americans with disabilities act inclusion specialists. The chief, a D.A. inclusion specialist, Brian Darnes, a staff member within the Department of Parks and Recreation, and another staff member in the Department of Facilities Management. From what I understand, this staff member oversees all new constructions in Evanston in terms of accessibility for people with disabilities. By the way, that was the first time I ever heard that Evanston had three inclusion specialists. I found it to be very disturbing, since the city never informed Evanston disability community about the two other inclusion specialists. After all, these inclusion specialists are there for us people with disabilities. Anyway, I come before you this morning to urge you not to eliminate the main inclusion specialist, Brian Darnes, physician. Let me give you concrete justifications as to why the city council should not cut this position. This inclusion specialist has accomplished many good things over the years. Mr. Darnes has increased the level of cooperation and understanding of disability issues among city departments to foster timely responses to issues. I can personally speak to this matter. I've seen increased numbers instrument of curb cuts. These curb cuts has helped me independently travel in my wheelchair in Evanston. As a person with a disability, I really value my independence. Also, under this inclusion specialist, this person started an employment program for people with disabilities. Two years ago, after the city received grant funding, the vice program was the first of its kind in Evanston, and it served 15 high school students graduated and furthered education. Some were even enrolled in a training program. The inclusion specialist has outreach to all people of all ages to increase awareness of people with disabilities. The inclusion specialist has outreach to all people of all ages to increase awareness of people with disabilities. Mr. Darnes has conducted all of the compliance reviews of any programs receiving funding from the city of Evanston, including the mental health board. The S- from the city of Evanston, including the Mental Health Board, the S.G., C, D, V, G, and other services. I've got invested interest in this issue. You see, in 1997, I joined forces with Mary Friedel, Jan Weeks, and other members of Evanston Disability Community and advocated to the Evanston City Council that the inclusion specialist position was needed for people with disabilities in Evanston. And the position was created by the council. We're very proud of this accomplishment. The proposed plan of eliminating Mr. Darnes' position job is just not logical. Why would you continue and assign this position to two people who may not have the expertise and the knowledge about the ADA as the chief inclusion specialist? To me, it just doesn't make any sense. If this is a budget crunch issue, then people with disabilities will suffer, no doubt. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joe Allen, could you hold the mic for Jan? Thank you. So everyone can hear.
Everybody's patience. My name is Jan Weeks. I also live at 2040 Brown. I've lived there 19 years. Prior to that, I've worked at Cook County Hospital, Illinois Department on Aging, and Illinois Department of Corrections. I've done budgets. I empathize with what all you all are facing. Trust me, I really do. But I also understand that when I first moved here, and it still remains, there's a sign not far from our building of 33 wheelchair people that says, "Caution, wheelchair next two blocks." And it's a warning sign. Well, we go all over town. And we have worked very hard to get the curb cuts, to get all kinds of awareness that needs to be increased even more in this town that we do exist. But also, I'm an election judge. And I'm a voter registrar. And I want people to understand that we vote. Remember that? Because it's all part of the process. And we are understanding of it. And I just ask for that awareness when you're having your clearness, please. Okay? So it's just sort of an affirmation of everybody's thinking clearly with a capital C, because I'm a Quaker. Please be aware in what you're facing. I do understand budgets. I had to do them for the state. I understand a lot of what you're facing, but we are a community that are part of Evanston and have been now, most of us, for 19 years. And we definitely still exist and don't intend to go anywhere else. And there's going to be more of us, and you all are going to get older too. So you just don't know what you might face. So I just ask you please to be considerate of said in your thoughts. Thanks a lot, everybody. Now, go rest.
Thank you.
Everybody, go rest.
Thank you, Jan. Bernice Valentinus, Bennett Johnson, and Jason Hayes. Bernice, she's still here? I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
My name's Bennett Johnson. I live at 708 Washington Street. I represent the Evanston Minority Business Consortium. And our primary concern right now is the need to keep the library branches and especially work to open one on the West Side. A library, as many people have said already, is important to the community. And one of the problems has been on the West Side for many, for decades, we've been trying to get a library over there. And the Evanston friends of the library have been kind enough to set up a ad hoc library or book lending space. And I think there's a need to really think carefully about what happens when you take a library out of the community. All the reasons have been stated before are pertinent. But also, also the key is that when you have kids standing on the corner instead of sitting in a library, then you open it up for the antisocial activity and the violence that's taken place over the past few months. We, to invest in the library saves the loss of money and lives and putting kids in jail and so forth. So I think we really think about the value, and it's not a lot of money, we're talking $300,000 or $400,000, that should be used to save the community rather than to keep going down this path. And I'd like to take this opportunity also to invite the city manager to the next meeting of our consortium on the 13th at all possible. And anyone else who wants to come from the council, we'd be glad to accommodate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jason Hayes. I live at 712 Dobson. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me sign up late. I appreciate it. I have two issues I'd like to go ahead and bring up. First of all, having to do with the Evanston Trees. I have a budget proposal that I would like for the city managers to consider. Having listened to the representative from Trees talk about the inoculation program, I think that's a program that's been put in place and should be supported at this point, if nothing else, just from a sunken cost kind of approach. It has proven itself to be a reasonably successful program. I certainly don't want to diminish it any further. Where I propose a budget savings is to put a moratorium on new tree planting for three years. After going over the budget, that would be a savings of about $1 million over three years. Where you choose to put that money, put it in the social programs, put it in the Mental Health Board, put it where it belongs. But it seems to me that three years of not planting new trees will not diminish the quality of our city, will not have a detrimental effect to the overall quality of life in Evanston. My next comment, I know there's a lot of passion about the branch libraries. And I don't think anyone wants to lose a library. And that's absolutely true. But I think what's most important is making sure that the library services are getting to the people that need them. And I don't think the branch system that we currently have does that job. The branch library on the South Branch is often touted as serving the lower economic factions of South Evanston. And let me tell you, it does not. I have neighbors in my neighborhood who can no longer go to any library because having checked out books by walking her three children to the South Branch Library and not being able to make it back had her have so many overdue fines that she was not able to use the library services anymore. Now this person doesn't have access to any libraries. The South Branch is not suited in its current location, both from an ADA standpoint, we talk about the inclusion specialists that are going on, the amount of money that it would take to refurbish that location to become compliant. The city has spent a lot of money buying up properties that personally I feel it had no need to be buying. The properties on Church Street, for example. I understand that the attempt was to improve the neighborhood and close down dilapidated properties. I don't think city buying up properties is the appropriate way to do that. But you talk about library services, it's got to go to the people who need it and get to the people who can't get to it. Now, if that means eliminating the branches and instituting a bookmobile system that is Wi-Fi capable, because often what's brought up is the lack of internet capability for the people who rely on the library for those services, then we can do that. That technology is out there. Bring the services to the people who need it. Bring it to the people who can't make it. I think opening up bookshelves in ad hoc locations is not the same as providing library There's got to be a better way to provide these services. I understand there's a lot of angst, and I know people on the North Side love their branch library and that it is an economic engine. I agree. I agree it is. But in the interest of equity, we cannot afford the South Branch because we cannot afford to retrofit it to become ADA compliant. It is not located in a position that actually serves the community it needs to serve. And in all equity, you know, to be fair, you cannot close the South Branch Library and not close the North Branch. That being said, I would love for us to have all the branches we want. We can't. But I would like the city to seriously consider the three-year moratorium on tree planting and see where that puts you for finance. There may be aspects of that plan I don't know about. But it seems to me that not planting new trees for three years will have zero net effect on the quality of life in Evanston, and that money can be used by programs that need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jamie Merrill, and last, Kate Mahoney.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Jamie Merrill. I live at 1236 Chicago Avenue. I'm here as a private citizen to lend my voice to the hundreds of Evanston residents who are not able to participate in a venue such as this because they have untreated mental illness. The cost to our society is great on many levels. I urge you, I know you have many difficult decisions to weigh in terms of budget, but I do urge you to please continue to fund services for mental health programs in Evanston so that we can make our investment in human potential. And I think by doing so, we'll only increase the benefit to our whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's still good morning. My name is Kate Mahoney. I live at 2538 Gross Point Road and have had the pleasure of working at Pure Services for the past 25 years. And I want to thank you for really investing through the allocation to the Mental Health Board in our city's most vulnerable citizens so that all of us together can help maximize their positive participation in our community. And to let you know that as an agency director, that when there is local funding with the level of accountability that happens through the Mental Health Board, that helps us leverage external dollars, state dollars, federal dollars, foundation dollars, because they know that people in our own community who see what we do every day and watch what we're doing and have us do reports back, show that we're a viable organization. And it helps a number of our organizations bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars of state revenue, federal revenue, foundation revenue, that we do our very best to then spend right back here in our own community in Evanston. So thank you so much for your investment and support of the Mental Health Board and all of the services that it provides. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes citizen comment. And now we have 10 minutes for a general discussion and budget consideration. Yes?
Adjourn the public hearing.
Do we need a vote?
Yes.
Would that make you happy? All right. Alderman Rainey, could you make a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Please.
I move to adjourn the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I want to address a statement or a reference made by Janad Rizki regarding part-time firefighters and public safety workers in other communities. Just like comparing Evanston's library with other communities, one of the differences between, one of the differences is that our city has branch libraries, and most of the cities we're compared to do not have branch libraries. So that's why. To compare the city of Evanston with other communities regarding volunteer, part-time, or contract fire and public safety, I wanted to point out that the city of Evanston, as of 2008, and there aren't more current numbers available, to me at least, online, the value, not the assessed, but the value of property in the city of Evanston excluding all of Northwestern's nontaxable property, excluding all of the hospitals, excluding all of our exquisite churches, all those things that are not on the tax rolls are not included in this number. In 2008, the value of property in the city of Evanston that is taxed totals $8 billion 815,000, 815 million, $193,676. I don't want a volunteer fire department or police department protecting this kind of value. And I don't think anybody else in the city wants that either. One of the, one of the things that the fire department has always done in submitting reports to us, which by the way, I've not seen lately, is if there is a fire, there are two columns. One column reported is the amount of loss for that fire. For example, a small fire, let's say a $10,000 loss. The next column is what did that property, what is the value of that property, which is the value that was saved by the service provided by the fire department or the police, whatever the case may be. And it's frequently $1 million, $2 million, $3 million with a $10,000 loss, if that. So it's just, you know, I support many things that Janad says, but sometimes statements are made that really have to be confronted because people tuning in think, well, maybe that's a great idea. Not when you have almost $9 billion plus whoever knows how many other billions of nontaxable properties. So just wanted to make that statement, that that is not something we should spend, after I shut up, one more second thinking about.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to address this morning the issue of the branch libraries. Hopefully, we can come to an agreement on how we're going to approach and make a decision upon them. I've been really impressed, as I said at the last council meeting, with the number of users of the branch libraries. I have the main library in my ward.
And it's frequently $1 million, $2 million, $3 million with a $10,000 loss, if that. So, it's just, you know, I, I support many things that Janad says, but sometimes statements are made that really have to be confronted because people tuning in think, well, maybe that's a great idea. Not when you have almost $9 billion plus whoever knows how many other billions of nontaxable properties. So, just wanted to make that statement, that that is not something we should spend, after I shut up, one more second thinking about.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to address this morning the issue of the branch libraries. Hopefully, we can come to an agreement on how we're going to approach and make a decision upon them. I've been really impressed, as I said at the last council meeting, with the number of users of the branch libraries. I have the main library in my ward. It's something that the entire city treasures, and I treasure it as well. But I think that there is a compelling argument to be made of the, the fact that the branch libraries actually do serve as economic anchors for the business districts in which they sit. I don't think there's any question about Central Street. I do think, as I've said before, that the South Branch Library on Chicago Avenue is not particularly well-suited and could be better suited if it were closer to Main Street. I'm also impressed with the fact that we have spent and continue to support our neighborhood shopping districts and have put money into them in encouraging the neighborhood businesses to become organized and present themselves in a more positive light to not only our community, but to shoppers from outside Evanston. So, I'm convinced that 140,000 people on the street visiting branch libraries each year is not something that in this economic climate we can afford to ignore. We are giving money to businesses who want to relocate in Evanston. I absolutely support that. I think we should have been doing more of that as, as we, as we could. But we should not ignore the fact that these 140,000 people visiting the branch libraries each year, if we're to believe what Jeff Smith said, and I had not heard that number before, that in associated spending by these, by people who visit branch libraries in other communities is roughly $10, which may not sound like much, but 140,000 people spending $10 now and then does add up. And it not only adds up to the city in terms of sales tax revenue, but also serves to support the small businesses in Evanston that are really struggling to survive. So, I would encourage the council to think of the branch libraries in terms of the economic development stimulation that they can provide and support them. And my suggestion is this. My suggestion is that we recognize their, their value, that the Economic Development Fund support them for another additional six months, during which time the city start work on establishing two SSAs surrounding both branch libraries. I've found a booklet that the city of Chicago employs, Guide to Starting a Special Service Area, which I will forward on to city staff. I'm sure they know much more about this than I do. But in the modest amount of research and talking that I've done to planning consultants throughout the city, I'm convinced that this is something that would work in Evanston. It would be based on the fact that the branch libraries do support and are economic stimulators, and it would also provide an additional amount of money to the shopping areas to improve services that they provide and the appearance of their shopping districts. So, I would, I would make that a suggestion that, that we look at very seriously and ask for your support on that.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman Fisk, I appreciate your comments about, your observations about library having economic development potential, and in our case, in Evanston, perhaps unrealized potential. It's not that I don't trust Mr. Smith's numbers, but I wonder if we could get information about the economic impact of our libraries, in general and more specifically as to those three locations. It's a positive impact, obviously. I think that's undeniable, that the impact of our libraries on those business areas is a positive one, not a negative one. But I'd like to see if there's a way to quantify that, using as a basis maybe Mr. Smith's numbers or finding our own. There is, the data is out there, the, the research is out there. And the questions that we've had about, this morning, about ADA compliance and walkability in the context of a discussion about libraries, I think is great information, actually, that would be of interest not to us, but to those who are the ones we charge with determining how to deliver library services, namely our Library Board of Trustees. So, I encourage us to collect the information about walkability and ADA compliance and the costs of ADA renovations, because I think our Library Board of Trustees is very interested because it affects how they do their job and how they deliver services to the community. When we talk about, when we talk about the people who take advantage of city services, we don't stereotype them. We don't generalize about them. When we talk about the residents who take advantage of the services at Fleetwood Jordaine and are smart enough to use those programs, or when we talk about the residents who enjoy the services at the Levy Center, we don't scorn them, we don't belittle them. It's not part of the discussion. Somehow, though, we think it's all right to scorn the people, our residents, who use library services, to belittle them, to undervalue what they look for in seeking those services. Is it because of where they live? They're my neighbors. Is it because of the type of services they're looking for? Library services, books, computers? Why is it that we think it's okay, to use words like elitism, based upon how these residents seek city services? But we don't do it when it comes to recreation programs, and we don't do it in the other city programs. I've found it very troubling. So, what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do is, is I, Alderman Jean Baptiste, I don't know if you remember, back in 2003, this is an example I'm using, the Human Services Committee had allocations authority for the purchase of services, allocations of, I think about $400,000 at that time. The Mental Health Board had an equivalent amount that it was responsible for. And the Human Services Committee was, every year was presented with lobbying and efforts to jigger those allocations that came in from Human Services. And at the time, I think, Human Services Committee approached the Mental Health Board, and I was on the board at the time, about consolidating the funding for Human Services to the Mental Health Board. Because at the time, the Mental Health Board had public hearings, allocation authority, they did accountability, quarterly reports, they still do. They had established themselves as having the ability, the expertise, and the wherewithal to determine how best to deliver mental health and human services through our agencies. The equivalent in the library discussion is the Library Board of Trustees. These are our experts. These are the people who have the background and the professional experience in what is best practices in libraries. I'm not sure that the, that the determination of whether it makes sense to provide library services in three locations is one that we are equipped and have the expertise to determine. I think the experts are our Library Board of Trustees. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to delegate the allocation authority, similar to what happened between the Human Services Committee and the Mental Health Board in, I think it was 2003, to do the same with the Library Board and give the Library Board a, a line for their budget and let them decide how best to provide services within that budget. I have some other questions, information that have come up. I want to pick up on a couple of things mentioned by some of the speakers. If I may, if we could have more information about the staffing of the Ecology Center, the total staffing of the Ecology Center, please. Could we also have information and accounting of our early retirement incentive program? What have been the total costs from that? How's it worked out? And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
By my calculation, we have covered like 19 topics this morning from all of the citizens, which included the Ecology Center, the environment, Human Services, Recreation, Library, Inclusion Specialists, Property Taxes, Budgets, Zoning Administrators, Lakefront, Water Connects, Leaf Collections, Retirement Cost of Previous Employees, Open Positions, 3-1-1, the capital budget, Medical Benefits for Alderman, Tree Injections, Tree Planning. And I would like for us to really give equity to each one of those concerns and not just concentrate on the library this time. If we could just do that and look at it across the board in terms of all of the citizens. And I would suggest that it is not the time to do it when we're looking at the clock at 12:30 in the afternoon after having a public hearing. But I hope, hopefully, that we can look at, and just because we didn't have 10 speakers to speak for tree planting or the budget or the zoning administrator, and then we had a lot of speakers speak for their particular interests, I think that we have to still consider that one person who spoke about the Water Connect. So, I'm just simply saying that I want us to open our hearts and our ears to listen to all of the citizens and just not concentrate on those where the squeaky wheel gets all of the oil this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to point out, we usually end these meetings at noon, or that's usually our attempt. I have three more speakers, and then it's up to all of you as to whether you want to keep going or not. I don't know who's got problems this afternoon that places they have to be. Alderman Tandem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to commend Alderman Grover in taking a lead on something I would like to also mention as far as our approach to how we view our local services and how people in my ward, Seventh Ward, we are involved in and certainly appreciate the services that we don't use in other wards. We're very much a part of it. We, we use them when we can, but they aren't the most convenient. Our meeting place in the Sixth Ward is the North Branch Library. I think that it's, there are opportunities in every neighborhood for this type of meeting The group that spoke today on the library, they spoke more eloquently than I, than I can, but the, but the numbers are there, the rationale is there. The obvious solution to me is to return the 150, roughly $150,000 to the Library Board. That was the original quest from the city manager. And that by, by its nature lets them take control of the budget that they wanted incomplete. Remove the restriction of the North Branch, of the branch libraries. Let them make that choice. That is their job. This sets free the friends of the library. They become the, the overseer of additional funding for outreach, for collections, much like the Fund for Excellence. I don't think we can ever have too many groups raising money for the library system. They may join forces in some occasions, but I think having a very active, very powerful group out there not only helps raising money for the libraries, but if you think down the road, when we have, when we're talking about a Field House or a Crown Center, this is the type of group you want behind you. This is the type of group that's going to drive this at the grassroots level. Corporate money is certainly involved, but getting a group like this behind any type specific movement is very, very important. Someone said it before. I agree. We cannot squash this kind of grassroots enthusiastic support. It sends a horrible message about what we are, about what we, we value and what we expect from our residents. We're asking, in one way, we, in light of cutting services, we're asking for our residents to step up more and to help out more, not to, not, not to shut them out. I think that the, this proposal is a good deal for all people. It, it, it creates an economic development engine, which is very, very inexpensive. When you think about the cost of 150,000 to operate the branch for, for a year, it would take so much economic development money and so much advertising promotion, whatever you want to call it, to infuse that kind of foot traffic that we're getting, the thousands of people that visit the library, branch library. Having the low cost of what it is to run a branch library, it's not only providing a service, but it is a huge, as Alderman Fisk says, a huge economic development engine. So, for a lot of reasons, I support these libraries. Everyone knows that. I, I just don't see the downside. I see, I see the library as a system that serves all of Evanston, and it's a system that, like branches, they grow, and we grow throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. I want to, I guess in large part echo what Alderman Holmes had mentioned. We have to focus on this big picture, not on just one or two items. And I think as a philosophy, last year and this year, one of the approaches that we're taking is that the answer is not to tax more and to spend more, and that means we have to make very difficult choices. Nobody wants to close the branch libraries. Nobody wants to make any of these cuts. Everything on the list today is important. It's important to individuals, it's important to organizations, and they provide important services to the people in Evanston. And we've asked to be representatives, and we're going to make difficult decisions that people don't want to have to make, and that's our responsibility. But if you look at where our state is and where our country is, we've got a lot of problems. And I think one of the things that we need to do philosophically is to try to get away from being a culture of entitlement and in a lot of ways, a culture of conflict. It's not one thing against another. I would like us to refocus our attention on becoming a culture of ideas and progressive thinking, and that's one of the things that I think is, is wonderful and, and that I love about Evanston. Evanston is that kind of community. I, and I know that the rest of the council, because we've been involved in this, are trying to fix things that are broken. I'm tired of legislators in Springfield telling me that they can't tackle a big problem because if they tackle this problem, they're not going to get elected. And if they don't get elected, they can't do any good. I'm tired and weary of those kinds of responses, and I'm tired and weary of no, of no action. It's time to make difficult decisions, and it's time to get past inaction. One thing I always try to keep in mind about Evanston is this, it's, it's not a wonderful place because of what it has or the places or the things. Evanston's a wonderful place because of the people that choose to be here. And if we have to make choices that eliminate things that are important to people, my hope and my expectation is that the people in Evanston will step up and fill those voids that are created, whether it's a social service program, or it's a branch library, or whatever it is, we can do that. And, you know, like I said, this is a time for difficult choices, but it's an also, it's also a time for people to step up, rise above, and, and make a difference on, on that everyday basis.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I don't want to be in a position of fixing broken parks, so I'd like a real clear, simplified explanation of the losses taking place in the Parks Department. I want to know about the effect it has on tree maintenance, on park maintenance, on sport field maintenance. I think Mark was exactly right. We've, we've spent so much money fixing all of these things. Let's not let them go downhill. I would think in, in terms of park maintenance, the very first thing we would have to address is where people have sports, have team activities, which means the little neighborhood parks get lost in the shuffle. I've noticed that they're not as good-looking as they used to be, even some that have been recently renovated. Weeds, not good, not good landscape maintenance at all. So, any more losses, you want to talk about affecting property values, a raggedy park in your neighborhood is nothing that helps the value of your property. I want to know about, more about the Ecology Center loss. I think the argument that a position that generates revenue and takes in revenue and the loss of that position, limiting people's ability to bring revenue in, I know we have online registrations, but certain things at the Ecology Center are products, so I'm concerned about that, and I'd like a better explanation. I don't support that cut at all at this point. Then, the Noise Center cut, need a lot more information about that. There seems to be substantial support for maintaining that position, which gets overshadowed, of course, by, you know, all the talk about small business. So, let's, let's take a look at those three things. The parks are so special and so important. I don't want to see any more losses there.
Thank you. Can everyone stay till 12:25? Is that all right? Dolores? Sorry. Is it okay?
Oh, one, one more thing, one more thing, Madam Mayor. I don't know, Dolores, if you included this in your request, the 3-1-1 I don't know, Dolores, if you included this in your request, the 3-1-1 information. I'm not feeling on board with that yet, but I, and I know others that I highly respect are, so I'd like to just see. I know one of the arguments is that the finances of 3-1-1 are being taken for, from the elimination of positions in other departments. I just, if we could have just a brief explanation of that one more time. I have your paperwork, but it's not convincing.
Alderman Grover?
If I may add to the list of requests for information, please. Thank you for the most recent questions and answers. My first question has to do with the payment in lieu of taxes agreement. According to page 45 of the proposed budget, we're budgeting $340,000, but the numbers in this memo only add up to about $98,000. So there are other payments in lieu of taxes that we expect as revenue, and they may not, they may be labeled differently. So help me make sense of that, please. Given the fact that it costs $103,000 to keep the township in its current offices, I think it's a no-brainer that we should seriously, seriously consider moving the township to the Civic Center. And, sorry, one more? I think that's it. Thank you. Wait, no, I do have one more. Please confirm for me that we do not violate any federal or state law by eliminating the inclusion specialist that we have on staff, those who are qualified to do the job.
Since you mentioned moving the township, Alderman Grover, I'll let everyone know that I've spoken with Senator Schoenberg and as part of our lengthy attempt to put the library together with the State Job Procurement Office. The State Job Office now may be leaving for Arlington Heights and a Chicago location, and it is Senator Schoenberg's hope and mine that if we did move the township, we could possibly put the State Job Office or part of it back in Evanston, and we really, our residents really need that service. So that would be something to consider along with your proposal. Next, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
I think that for all of us, it's important to look at the big picture, as some of you have stated. I think that one statement that the city manager made in his opening letter, opening statement to the budget, on page five on future challenges, he said, and it's under the title, you know, the subtitle, "Continue Funding for Quality of Life Services." With continued budget reductions, some come impacts to the city's ability to continue to deliver quality public services. He continued, "I believe the reductions made last year and this year ends our ability to make reductions that do not significantly impact our ability to deliver services." You know, when we talk about where we're going and where we've been, for those of us who have been on the council longer than others, it has always been difficult to cut services, to let people go. And every cut that we've made in the past, we've felt that services would be impacted. And I think with the city manager making the statement that he's making right now, it, to me, flags that we are impacting services right now. I mean, he is trying to warn us that next year, when he has to present a budget to us, it will be more difficult for him to present something that does not impact the quality of services that are delivered to the citizens of the city of Evanston. And I think this year, when we look at the inclusion specialist position, I mean, it's a little counterintuitive to me, and I'm still trying to understand how we will do something that is, that will make up for that loss. When we want to get rid of the city's zoning administrator, that whole position, to me, will begin to impact services. When we talk about further cuts in parks and recreations, you know, when do we stop? And I think that the concern that we all have had for our citizens to not raise any taxes is legitimate. None of us want to pay taxes. We do it for the, to make sure that we're able to meet the pension challenges. We all are willing to do that right now. We're not resisting, kicking and fighting as we did maybe a couple of years ago. But I think we cannot take an absolute position around additional taxes. And I think we have to be open to consideration of being flexible. Because if we say next year, we'll then be ready to look at how we minimize the impact on services, what about this impact on services this year? What are we doing about that? I mean, have we been moved to a place where we all think that is acceptable to just go ahead and continue to cut back on the things that we didn't want to cut last year, we're now willing to cut this year? I would like to see the city manager come back to us and say, okay, to not cut back on the positions and services this year, we would, how much taxes will we need to raise? And, you know, I will want to see a gradation, a sort of grid, you know, of, you know, for each one of these cuts, what is the cost, what would be the cost to the taxpayers to keep them? And I'm talking about, you know, all those positions that I've cited, but all of these services and positions that you have suggested. And of course, with the cutbacks, there is the addition of the 3-1-1 center, so there are additional expenses. We need to look at, you know, whether or not and measure the losses and the gains by the moves that we make. So please respond to that, and I'm asking everybody to just be open, let's not make it a sacrilege to consider some flexibility in the taxing column. I don't want to do it, but I'm saying, how far do we go? That's what I want to say.
Alderman, tandem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to mention, I did submit a request for more information, current and updated information regarding the tree injection program. City manager should have received that yesterday, and I think it'll shed a lot of light. We had this discussion five years ago, and we had a lot more very accurate data since then, including our inoculation, and how successful and how much money we ultimately do save by not tearing down trees. So I hope we'll have that discussion at some point soon. I think it's a good one to have. I do believe it's a real money saver.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I agree with you, Alderman, tandem. Thank you for mentioning that. I'd like the updated data as well, especially what Ms. Mann mentioned today, and the savings by injecting the trees rather than cutting them down. Alderman Jean Baptiste and Alderman Rainey, I agree with you about some trepidation about, or at least questions about the 3-1-1 center. And I hope we can have that discussion as we go forward. The last thing I wanted to mention, well, forestry workers along with the tree injection program, I want to see a comprehensive analysis of how that is all going to work together and whether in fact we are taking the right approach to save money. I think there's another way of actually saving more money, including the tree injections. Finally, Joel Silverman's position at the NOISE Cultural Arts Center, I think there's very, very strong support to retain that. And I think there's some justification that Ms. Silverman's position really does support the tenant group at NOISE. And these are people who entered into leases with the city of Evanston with the understanding that they were going to get a minimal amount of support for the clerical, their clerical needs. And I would, as I've requested before, I'd like to have a list of all the tenants at NOISE and when their leases expire.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste, did you?
Yeah, there was one more thing I wanted to just ask that we keep our minds open to at Economic Development Committee. Mr. Facilco had come to us several times to make us begin to think of the revenue side of the equation. And I think that we have basically not been, not opened our minds, and I think we have to begin to think down the line, because I don't think the economic recovery that we may want to see will come that quickly. So we need to begin to think of how do we use other resources such as the lakefront? To what extent do we want to, you know, is it something that might be able to generate some revenue for us down the line? So I think that we have to begin to think about these things. I don't think in this budget season we could do so, but city manager, I would think that we've got to begin to think down the line, not just next year, but four, five years down the line.
City manager, did you have some comments you wanted to make?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is really some housekeeping items. At Your Places this morning is a packet dated November 6th from Mrs. Earl regarding the capital improvement program. There'll be a presentation on Monday evening to walk through this. The reason we're giving this to you in hard copy is to hopefully make this a little bit easier. You probably don't have the ability to print this out at home. It's also on our website. So we will walk through our proposals for the capital plan at your meeting on Monday the 8th. Also, just to note, there is no Planning and Development Committee meeting Monday evening, so we will begin the council meeting at 7:15 or at the conclusion of the Administration and Public Works Committee. We have a time certain for a presentation to Professor Mortensen, the recipient of the Nobel Prize in Economics, and that'll be a time certain at eight o'clock. Family members of his, committee members are coming. So if the council meeting has already begun prior to eight o'clock, we would ask that that be then the next item at eight o'clock. We have a cake and probably take a short recess to do that. The council's budget calendar would have the council resuming its budget deliberations on Monday, November the 15th at 7:00 PM pursuant to the rules of procedure that the council's Rules Committee reviewed at the beginning of October. You'd indicated that you wanted to allow for public comment at the beginning of that meeting, as you would other meetings. That, under your rules, is 45 minutes, and would ask the council if that is all right with you then, and we would put that on the agenda. There will be no more than 45 minutes of public comment at the beginning of the meeting on Monday, November the 15th, and then the council would go into deliberations. There's also a second meeting that week scheduled for Wednesday, November the 17th, and unless the council directs me otherwise, we'll notice that for the same procedure. So it'll begin at seven o'clock, 45 minutes of public comment, and then into council deliberations. Then it is our hope that you'll largely be concluded with your deliberations on the 17th, so that at your regular meeting on Monday, November the 22nd, you would have documents before you to adopt the budget.
Is that all right?
Alderman Burris, my apologies.
Actually, I wasn't sure if it was referred. Junad made a comment about the numbers for the leaf are the yard waste collection program. It would be good to get that revenue number, and I wanted to echo what Alderman Jean Baptiste said about focusing on revenue. I know that a couple, three of us last year focused on revenue. I think the rest mostly focused on expenditures, and it's a serious concern. We have to look at both sides of the sheet and make sure that we are making realistic projections on the revenue side.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Host, we are adjourned.